Hi, I am. Thank you. Should I do that right now?
Yes, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Odegaard, can you please read our mission statement?
Yes, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, Mr. Odegaard. We're now down to item number four. Item number four is public participation. While council can listen and receive input, per law, because the items have not been agendized, we are unable to reply to anything that we might hear. City Clerk, do we have anything for public participation?
None for this area.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk. We're going to go ahead and move down to item number five of our agenda. Item number five is a review of the draft agenda for our...
Mayor?
Yes?
Could we do roll call?
Oh, I missed that. Let's go back up to roll call. Thank you.
Mayor Evans?
President.
Vice Mayor Shimoni?
President.
Councilmember Aslan?
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Odegaard?
Present.
Councilmember Salas?
Present.
Councilmember Whelan?
Present.
Thank you, City Clerk, for that. We're going to go ahead and go down to item number five. This is a review of the draft agenda for the September 15, 2020 city council meeting. Counsel, are there any items that you're interested in pulling for discussion tonight?
I don't see any items.
So at this time, we'll go ahead and move forward. Counsel, just as a reminder, if you have any questions or comments about the draft agenda that you need to have answered prior to next week, please email the city manager those questions so he can make sure they get answered prior to the meeting. With that, we're now down to item number six. Item number six is downtown flowers and planters update.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember. This is Eliza Kretzman. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you as I've got a presentation with some visuals for you. Let me get this going. Okay, as I mentioned, my name's Eliza Kretzman. I'm the Beautification Arts and Sciences Manager here at the city, here to provide you with an update from our pilot program on the downtown flowers and planters. Today, I will be covering a brief background and overview of the element types and locations, as well as lessons learned, including technical costs and feedback. So this is a project that has been percolating at the city for several years. It is requested by the public through groups such as the Downtown Business Alliance and supported by the Beautification and Public Art Commission, as well as city leadership. And this year, we decided to go for a pilot project to test the waters on this concept as we saw a high demand. So first, I'll start with an overview, including types of plantings and a little more information on locations. Right now downtown, we have 24 hanging baskets. We have more fully filled out the Heritage Square Planters, including a Pollinator Focused Garden in Heritage Square. And we also have wine barrel plantings along Aspen in the partial closure, as well as some whiskey barrel plantings, and these are to help with the infrastructure of that partial closure and the closure of the alley south of Heritage Square. So let me talk a little bit about hanging baskets. Probably most of you have seen these in person as they've been up for several months now. This is to give you an idea of what they look like, and they are brimming with locally adapted, climate-appropriate plants. I will mention, right now, they're being covered for the potential freeze. So if you drive downtown right now and you see something that looks like a bunch of dumplings, that is our hanging baskets. Just know that we have a purpose for covering them. We're trying to save those flowers as we dip into 32 degrees in the next few days. So Heritage Square Planters, here's a picture of those permanent planters before. This is during the winter, so they do look particularly empty. Here is the Pollinator Garden when it was recently planted in the spring. So this is when it was fairly new. I will mention, this is part of a larger effort by the city that includes sustainability and parks to have Pollinator Gardens throughout Flagstaff. And this is also in line with the mayor's Monarch Initiative. So gardens that provide food and habitat, et cetera, for our beloved pollinators, including the monarch butterfly. As you can see, the garden changes with the season. Here it is a little bit later in the season. And this picture is from more recently in mid-August, and you see that the pentstamens and the yarrow are starting to fill in our beautiful native plants. And every time that I've visited the garden, I will mention that pollinators are partaking in it, whether that be birds or even some monarch butterflies that I've spotted downtown as well. The additional element that we also have is the Aspen Street, partial street closure, as well as the alley closure south of Heritage Square. And this project, council is probably familiar with this. The intent of the expanded use of right-of-way is to create more outdoor spaces for our visitors and our public so that we can provide some amenity for public health during this time of COVID. And the flowers that you see here are not just beautiful, they're also part of the infrastructure of the expanded use of right-of-way, so helping to delineate a pedestrian bicycle lane here on Aspen, as well as closing the alley south of Heritage Square to traffic so that that can also be utilized for seating and for walking, and so that people can spend some more time outside. I will mention, all the beautiful plantings that you see are done by a contractor we are working with called Foxglove Landscaping, and they bring a lot of expertise to the project. So here is an overview of locations, and I've got two maps here. The one on the left shows the original scope that we planned with Foxglove this year in their contract. And the red dots are the hanging baskets and the square and rectangle that you see there in the middle in Heritage Square that is showing the permanent planters. This is not to scale, it's just to show an illustration of where these are. The map to your right shows what is actually in Heritage Square in the surrounding areas right now as we speak. The red dots are the hanging baskets. You see the permanent planters that have been more fully filled out in Heritage Square. The blue dots are actually the wine barrel and whiskey barrel plantings that are part of the expanded use of right-of-way plantings. So now we're going to move into some of the lessons learned. One of the main benefits of this pilot project is that we learned a great deal about how to successfully implement a flower project and have many lessons learned that we can build on in future years. And so I'll go over some of those lessons, including technical cost and feedback. So first, technical. I will say, when I first started this project, I did not realize how complex some of the technical aspects were. And so it required a collaborative effort across city divisions, including parks and recreation, streets, community development, traffic and risk, as well as our internal teams at Economic Vitality who all provided expertise, so I wanted to thank them all for that. The lamp posts were a particular challenge, as we had heard they may not have the capacity to hold the elements of the hanging baskets, so we worked with a structural engineer to gain information on weight limits, wind, et cetera, how that would impact the weight that those baskets can handle. Another element that was a little bit tricky was the brackets. We were planning on using the posts that we have used in the past for the banner program, and we learned that those would not be adequate. So we were trying to buy some brackets, and during COVID, that actually proved rather challenging to order them. Luckily, we found a local business to manufacture them here in Flagstaff, and that is Artisan Metal Works. I also want to mention, of course, plants in the high desert is always a learning curve, as anyone who's moved here and tried to garden without much knowledge of the environment here. You know, with the heat, wind and monsoons that we have, Foxglove gardening has provided some top-notch expertise and care to ensure they were successful even in our climate. Cost is also an element where we learned a lot. When we got estimates back from vendors, they were quite a bit higher than we expected, to the tune of $30,000 to $40,000 higher than expected. So originally, we'd looked at a much more full scope that included the south side, included elements such as semi-permanent ground planters, and we reduced that due to COVID, the recession, et cetera. So the vendor cost for the initial scope was just about $39,000. That increased by about $8,000 to include the additional elements for the expanded use of right-of-way, and that's the wine barrel and whiskey barrel plantings that you see on Aspen and in the alley south of Heritage Square. I will mention that this project is paid for by the beautification section of the bed, board and beverage tax, as the council knows, and that tourism tax is what funds this project. And that funding is supported by ordinance to be used only for beautification purposes, as determined by voters in Flagstaff, so that is not funds that we can transfer to something like the general fund. And I just wanted to make that clear. I also wanted to mention that this project is in our current five-year plan. We have funds for next year that are on par with what we spent this year. And we also have an ongoing line item of $25,000 a year in our budget. And we also feel it's likely we can find additional funds to add to this if it is desired by the community. The flip side of costs is, of course, it can come with benefits. Beautification brings additional funds to communities. There's a recent 2019 study that found that the more beautiful a city is, the more successful it is at attracting jobs. And that's just one example of the kind of effect this project can have on a city. Additionally, and this is especially important this year, this project is supporting local jobs and local businesses, not just Foxglove, but local nurseries, the metal artisan work group, so it is something that is also providing that to the community, as well as showing love to the downtown businesses as well. Many of the costs won't be repeated, such as materials, the hanging baskets. Many of the plants you see are perennial, so many of them will come back in future years. And even some of the elements of the hanging baskets, such as geraniums, will be reused in future years. So while the initial startup costs are high, some of those will not be repeated. I will mention, maintenance is the highest cost item of this project, as it's very intensive, and Foxglove is working on the planters every single day. Next piece of lessons learned is public feedback. So so far, it is overwhelmingly positive. This is anecdotal from the Downtown Business Alliance and responses on social media, as well as what we hear from Foxglove as they are downtown working on the baskets. One area we want to expand in future years is to work with the DBA closely for more specific input from local businesses ahead of next year's program. And there's considerations for the future, geographic expansion. As we intended to include the south side originally, we'd love to weave the south side into this program. One other lesson learned is that we focused a lot on streetscapes this year with the hanging baskets. And while the hanging baskets are beautiful, there's a lot happening visually downtown, whether it be the street trees, the colorful signs of local businesses. And so in some ways, those flowers did not stand out quite as much as we'd hoped. So we're considering things like a main focus on Heritage Square, adding hanging baskets and other elements there, and maybe looking at key entry points off of Milton and Route 66 to invite people to explore the business district of downtown and the south side rather than the streetscapes. So really being strategic where we place these next year. Otherwise, we're just looking to build on the successes of the pilot, and we're welcoming input from you and the community. So at this point, I'll turn it over for questions and discussion. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you so much. Counsel, do we have any comments? Questions? Mr., excuse me, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Eliza, so much for the presentation and your work on this. A couple ideas moving forward. You know, I wonder if there was any way we could potentially, you know, maybe partner with either local businesses or local nonprofits, or even individuals, kind of like what we do with the Adopt a Trail program. Maybe we could have like an adopt a flower bed program and to help kind of with the cost and to allow this program to expand not only to the south side but to the east side. I could see this being a really cool thing to have along Fourth Street, potentially. I know it's not as centralized as downtown, but I think that the east side would definitely appreciate and benefit from such a program, but while sharing the costs, you know, and not just putting it on the city. And then I was wondering if there's any room for possible collaboration with like groups like the Master Gardeners, because, you know, in talking about maintenance, I think that there's a lot of members of our community who would sign up to help with maintaining such, you know, flowers and their well-being in these spots. And it could even be, you know, part of when you adopt a bed, a flower bed, you not only pay into it, but you're also responsible to help with the upkeep. I don't know if these ideas are going to add more work than they're worth, but just thought I would share, but thank you.
Thank you for those ideas and comments, Vice Mayor. This is Eliza again. So this year, I really do think the success was due to having the private contractor, and I hope that we can do that this following year as well. With that said, definitely, we are thinking about other models and looking at what other cities are doing. I will mention, before I moved to Flagstaff and took this position, I worked on public green space in many cities, including Santa Fe, New Mexico. And so we did experiment with some of those models, and what we found is often they're most successful when we have a group that their main mission is dedicated to this place, and they have great expertise as well. And so we'll definitely be considering that and also looking at some cost-share models. We are definitely thinking along the same tracks, and I look forward to continuing the conversation with you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I don't see any other comments from council related to this item, so thank you very much. We'll move on to the next one.
Thank you.
We're now down to item number seven. This is discussion consideration. This is a citizen's petition requesting that city council seriously consider the effect of noise pollution on the quality of life in Flagstaff. Address the unnecessary noise created when drivers intentionally modify a vehicle for the sole purpose of increasing their noise footprint. And so we have two public comments on this particular item. Let's go ahead and start with the public comment.
Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and dial the first one.
Hello? You can start your public comment. Can you please state your name for the record?
Yeah. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, we support the request of Michael Collier for something to be done about the loud vehicles. We hear vehicles speeding through Thorpe Park, Up Mars Hill, Santa Fe, as well as on Milton and Route 66. They're so loud, we hear them inside our house, even with the windows closed. We know from the sound that they are accelerating, or, excuse me, that they are likely speeding because they are accelerating at a fast rate. The noise is annoying. It happens regularly and frequently from about 4:00 PM until the early hours of the morning. Between me and my wife, we call in police reports on average once a week, sometimes multiple times a week. Seriously, we could call every day, but we're tired of it. I could really use the non-emergency number for the police on speed dial, including bypassing the phone tree. As all know, speeding is dangerous. There are deer in Thorpe Park, and we all know how they are difficult to see from dusk to dawn. There are a lot of people walking, bike riders, children and dogs too. Pedestrians and bicyclists are on these streets as well. This is likely unlawful behavior, i.e. the speeding, and it should be stopped before somebody is hurt. Please listen to Michael. He has done significant research on the subject. There is no reason to allow unlawful, disrespectful and dangerous behaviors to continue. As you may know, there is a noise ordinance with an exemption for noise from quote-unquote "normal" traffic. However, I would submit this intentional noise is not normal traffic noise. Thank you again. I'm speaking on behalf of Charlie Silver and Duffy Westheimer Flagstaff. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Michael?
Michael Collier? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I'll give you a three-minute presentation. I moved to Flagstaff in 1968. It was quieter then. Since then, we've learned to endure our share of expected urban noise, trains, sirens, construction, helicopters. But I'd like to discuss something different this afternoon, intentional noise created by a handful of drivers for no understandable reason. The existing Flagstaff noise ordinance focuses mostly on out-of-control parties and only mentions car thoroughways in passing. Our state law about mufflers doesn't seem to be enforced. All of us are tired of hearing cars jacked up with their mufflers jacked up a quarter mile away. Nowadays, you can buy a muffler that's made to sound just like the blast of an automatic rifle. Calls to the police seem to be handled on a case-by-case basis, with officers occasionally intercepting a noisy driver. Our former chief of police told me that this is a priority that his department was not going to pursue. He said that he would have to show objective evidence if a citation was going to stick. He said that his officers would have to go through a lengthy noise certification process. And he said that his budget only goes so far towards upending more serious offenders. This I understand. In Boise, the police began enforcement when a vehicle exceeds 92 decibels heard at least 20 feet away. I spoke with Officer Orton there, who said he had no problems with enforcement. No one in his department had taken a noise certification course. Orton sees his noise-related traffic stops as a chance to educate. I spoke with Chief Matthew Champlin in Santa Fe, New Mexico, where the law allows a car to create up to 77 decibels when measured 25 feet away. Chief Champlin's officers mostly rely on their powers of observation and common sense. I bought a $20 sound meter last winter. I've frequently recorded heavy traffic in the 80 to 85 decibel range. Motorcycles can rip by in the mid-90s. I measured one sports car peeling away at 105 decibels. Both of its elderly occupants were wearing protective ear muffs. The CDC reports hearing loss when we're exposed to 100 decibels for 15 minutes or 110 decibels for one and a half minutes. The CDC says noise pollution can cause hypertension, heart disease and learning disabilities. Why do we tolerate this? I'd like to see city council start a conversation about this aspect of life in Flagstaff. I'd argue that noise created intentionally is somehow different than other sources. What impacts are we willing to live with in a growing vibrant community? And what intrusive aspects can we choose to control? Should we, the citizens, and you, the representative council members, take responsibility for our quality of life? Thank you for taking the occasion to consider this proposal.
Thank you. I understand that we have one additional phone comment? Is that correct, Ms. Fulbar? City Clerk?
Stacy, are you on mute? Can you take this, really?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Our speaker has decided to decline to speak. He said everyone else has been doing a wonderful job.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so with that, this is a citizen's petition. I believe we need to have three members on council who are interested in moving this forward. Is that correct? Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I absolutely support moving this forward. I could elaborate, but I guess I could just leave it at that for now.
Okay. Mr. Aslan?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. I am in support.
Ms. Salas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Collier, for bringing forth this issue. I look forward to a council discussion addressing this issue.
Ms. Whelan?
I also look forward to this discussion. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Collier.
Ms. Odegaard?
I just wanted to say I was in support. Thank you for bringing this work to us. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you for the discussion on this topic. I look forward to the discussion. I just wanted to mention to our city manager, maybe we can reach out to some of these other cities and other police chiefs and see if we can learn more from how they're handling it and what they're doing, because I do see enforcement being a little bit of a challenging subject or topic around us. But maybe my thoughts or concerns aren't based in reality. Thank you.
Well, awesome. It looks like this is moving forward, and we are going to have this discussion coming up. So thank you. We will go ahead and move down to the next item on our agenda. That's item number eight. This is a discussion and consideration. This is a citizen's petition requesting that the city council formally declare 2020 the Year of the Mother in Flagstaff. City Clerk?
Mayor, we do not have any public comment for this.
Is there any additional information on this?
Kristin Kaufman is the petitioner, and she is here to speak to you all.
Okay, so there is somebody here. Okay. Ms. Christine?
Yeah, hi, thank you. Good afternoon, council, and thank you for having me today. I put forward this petition to formally request a declaration for a Year of the Mother to help promote and push conversations, to take motherhood seriously, to challenge local employers to find ways to better support mothers and get real about maternal mental health. What I'd like to do with this declaration is by having the backing of council in this way, I'd first like to look to local employers to move towards policy changes to support mothers in the workplace. And then, women across the nation are working just as the sort of other small local ways to build momentum and bring forward conversations to Congress and to work towards more action federally. And I think that this is one way that can begin that conversation and that I can get involved in. So originally, this was submitted as a 2020 petition, and of course, COVID-19 has rightfully so taken priority. And I would like to also mention that with this pandemic, it has shined a bright light on the extensive challenges posed to mothers, particularly working minority and single mothers. And moms are leaving the workplace due to a lack of childcare, new homeschooling obligations and/or layoffs. And since we're still in the middle of this pandemic, we don't know the true or final impact yet, but it is safe to assume that mothers are struggling and have been impacted greatly, like so many others. And so in closing, I just, I'm not sure what the rules are, but because of the new challenges related to the pandemic, and since we're sort of getting close to the end of 2020, I'd like to request, if possible, and if you're interested in continuing the conversation, that the Year of the Mother be for the upcoming year of 2021. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. McCarthy?
Right, got my mic on. Thank you, Mayor. I called Kristin when I saw her phone number on this petition and made the suggestion that we do it for 2021, because this year is almost over. I'm very supportive of this. I would like to make the declaration. I think the cost to the city would be minimal and the recognition would be worthwhile. I'd like to also point out that the council has done some things in this regard. We took Charlie Odegaard's Uh, we took Charlie Odegaard's suggestion and, uh, improved, uh, parental leave for, uh, new, new mothers, you know, when they have a baby. So, uh, anyway, bottom line, I'm supportive.
Counsel? Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, uh, Kristin, uh, for bringing this forward. I'm not a little sure how I'll go about this, because it, it seems a little bit all over the board. Oops. So, so, you know, I, you know, I like, you know, kind of that declare, you know, I kind of like the idea, maybe we can do, uh, you know, a kind of a proclamation or a recognition type of thing, but beyond that, I'm, I, I'm not sure. So, but that's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on council? So I'm going to go ahead and weigh in on this conversation. Um, first of all, I just want to make a correction, uh, Mr. Uh, McCarthy. You know, parental leave is for, um, fathers as well as, uh, mothers. I just want to make sure that we understand that, uh, when it comes to what the city is offering. Um, I would like to go ahead and provide a, uh, third to this particular item. Um, I think that, um, this conversation is one that we should have, um, as a city, even if it's just us declaring it to be a Year of the Mother. Um, I think that that is extremely important, um, and having a conversation about, uh, you know, what is really happening, um, with mothers here in the city of Flagstaff, especially when it comes to COVID and this pandemic. Um, and I think, um, that that would be an important conversation to have. Uh, I do want to say that I'm not sure, and this is a legal question, if we can simply say two thousand and twenty-one, um, because of how the petition was written and submitted to us. You know, we are, um, I think, bound by law to accept the petition, um, the way it was written, and it wasn't written for two thousand and twenty-one. So that would be a legal question or a question of the clerk. Um, and then I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to our city attorney first, and I'm going to go back up to Ms. Solis.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, hopefully, I'm not contradicting something Sterling has said in the past, but if the petitioner is willing to amend the petition, and it's something as simple as just changing the year in this situation, I don't see an issue with that.
So I want to say that the petitioner has verbally, um, stated that she'd be willing to do that. She might have to submit something in writing to the clerk. I'm not sure. Is that a question for the clerk?
I, I don't, I don't, I mean, she can submit something in writing. That'd be great, but she's verbally stated it here. It makes sense. There were some timing issues. Council was just getting to this in September. Um, I don't see an issue with changing it to two thousand and twenty-one at her request.
Thank you. Ms. Solis?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, you know, thi- thi- this issue is so close to home, so I, I'm going to support this, this citizen petition. But I also want to, uh, give my two cents of advice to Ms. Kaufman, um, to consider, you know, lobbying at the state legislature to, to influence any policy that will be effective statewide in terms of workplace, uh, guidelines and/or improving how, uh, uh, different types of, of, um, business organization, um, will support, um, mothers, uh, at the workplace level. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Um, thank you for this topic, and, and I look forward to listening to the discussion. I would like to ask that, um, the use of the word "mother," um, that we broaden that not just being, uh, a female, but a much broader issue of mothering or the act of raising children. I think sometimes we get this narrow vision of what we mean by "mother." Uh, and I would just challenge us to, to, uh, broaden that, uh, definition. So, thank you.
We are now with Mr. Aslan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Kristin. I think this petition has enough minimal support to move forward, but I just wanted to voice, um, my support for the record.
Um, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Kristin. I, I too support this. Um, I, I do, I appreciate Councilor Whelan's comments regarding just parenting and broadening the scope, um, and look forward to the future discussion regarding this topic. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and continue to move down.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So we are now down to item number nine of our agenda. Item number nine is an update on Arizona State Land Department auction of four hundred and five point thirty-six acres located south of I-40 and east of John Wesley Powell Boulevard within section twenty-six.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. This is Community Development Director Dan Fulk. I've been asked to provide some information on this upcoming auction, and hopefully you can see my screen with the first slide. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So this is the actual flyer that the Arizona State Land Department has put out. Um, they are putting up, uh, this parcel for auction. It's just over four hundred and five acres. To orient you where we are, the state land parcel is this, uh, kind of L-shaped parcel in blue. Uh, it's just south of I-40. To the west, kind of southwest, you've got Pine Canyon. South of this parcel, I believe, is Forest Service land. Private property to the east and to the north. And I should say, due, uh, west would be Juniper Point, I believe. And so an application was filed with the Arizona State Land Department. You've got the application number here, five-three-dash-one-two-zero-eight-three-four. Uh, the applicant is Symmetry Development Company. Uh, the auction will be on October twenty-second on the steps of the Coquenino County Courthouse. Uh, the applicant is required to do some due diligence in preparation for the auction. Uh, they had to have an appraisal done, and so the appraised value came back at, uh, ten million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And so my understanding is that'll be the minimum, uh, bid price. And then the administrator for, uh, state land is Joe Charles, and that's his contact information if anyone has questions about the auction itself. Let me advance to the next slide. Here's a screenshot of the property a little closer in. Again, this kind of bluish is the four hundred and five acres. And what we've got showing on this, uh, screenshot is the Arizona National Scenic Trail. And so the Arizona Trail does, uh, go across this property. In nineteen ninety-eight, uh, the city received right-of-way from the state land department. And so in June of nineteen ninety-eight, state land sold, uh, what they identify as right-of-way. It's a thirty-foot trail easement. Um, it's a right-of-way dedicated for a public trail, uh, which is the Arizona Trail. And I just took a s- uh, section from the ALTA survey, what people call an ALTA survey, which is attached to this item in your packet. It shows the whole parcel, and it shows where the thirty-foot trail easement is. And so, um, that easement is in place. Uh, the Arizona Trail will remain, uh, as it is located now, uh, with the next owner. So it's an, it's an easement that runs with the property or a right-of-way that the city controls, again, for a public trail. What does the regional plan say about this property? And so here's our big overall future growth illustration. If you can see my arrow, the L, L is right here where I'm pointing. And so we've identified an area type for this property as well as a place type, uh, which is an activity center. Here it is a little closer. This lighter yellow is future suburban. The darker yellow to the west is existing suburban. That's where Pine Canyon is. And so right now, the property is zoned RR, Rural Residential. So owner were contemplating a rezoning. Uh, the area type provides guidance on what the intensities and what types of uses would be anticipated here. Again, it's a suburban, uh, area type. The place types, there are two activity centers shown as potential future activity centers. Within the suburban neighborhood area type, uh, two to thirteen units per acre is what's anticipated in that suburban area type. Within an activity center, it would be six to thirteen units per acre, so the minimum goes up to six. Um, and again, a neighborhood scale mixed-use activity center could have six to twenty-nine units an acre. And really, as, if an application were to be filed, uh, to zone this, um, that's when you would potentially look at these activity centers. Um, we could also refine these activity centers. The, the regional plan allows for, for the city or an owner to do a plan for an activity center. Um, the other thing that's going on is the John Wesley Powell Public Infrastructure and Facility Specific Plan, as the heading says. And so we are, um, through that specific plan, land use is being considered, and we're going to be giving council an update next month. It's on October twenty-seventh. Um, our consultant on the JWP specific plan will be sharing information as to where the plan is now. And it really looks at potential land uses really throughout the entire corridor. I don't think I mentioned, this line here to the south is the anticipated John Wesley Powell extension. So it dead-ends right at the state land today. That's where it dead-ends, just north of, uh, Pine Canyon. And so we do anticipate JWP extension going through this property. And so through that, um, not only through that plan, will we see anticipated land uses and intensities, but there's going to be a public participation component to this, which is Phase Two. And Sarah Decter is going to lead that effort, and so we'll get additional input from the community. And you could see these activity centers move. You could see them change through that planning as we get more fine-tuned. I think the specific plan is really going to show, um, some of the limitations throughout this whole corridor and where the opportunities are for, uh, development. Which provides a good segue to my last slide, uh, second-to-last slide, which is what the regional plan has mapped on significant natural resources. And so up to the north, um, there is floodplain. All of this green is the Rio de Flag floodplain. It just crosses this top corner. These yellow areas indicate limestone soils, uh, which could, which could indicate, uh, plant types that could be preserved. And then back when the regional plan was done, there was a large prairie dog colony out here. Again, I think our specific plan, um, hopefully will provide some information if these things have changed much. Uh, and then the Arizona National Scenic Trail, it's not mapped on here, but again, we've identified it on another slide. And so those are all things that'll be considered as well as the specific plan is advanced, as well as any potential future rezoning. And then here's a screen grab again of the notice from the Arizona State Land Department. Again, the auction is set for October twenty-second at eleven AM on the steps of the courthouse. Uh, the beneficiary, as with state land, is the University of Arizona. They're the beneficiary of the sale of the property. And again, any questions on the auction can go to Joe Charles, uh, with the Arizona State Land Department. I want to thank everybody who helped me put this information together. It was kind of a last-minute thing on Friday. Um, and so I think there are a few people on that can help answer questions as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Why is it that the University of Arizona is the beneficiary? And not like the entire system? Does that make sense?
It does. I don't know enough about state land, if that means the entire system or if it's specific to that campus. But that would be a good question for state lands. I don't know the answer to it.
Is that something that perhaps somebody in the city could just ask?
Yeah, I can follow up with Joe Charles.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Ms. Whelan, followed by Mr., um, Odegaard.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Fulk, could you go back to, uh, I think, two maps ago? And that's it. And can you, uh, tell me where Fourth Street is?
So Fourth Street, you're not going to see on this map? So as JW, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
So as JWP turns to the north, right at the edge of the slide, it's going to continue north and hit Fourth Street, just up off of the map here. Kind of where Butler comes in to the north and, uh, so it's just off the map.
Thank you.
East.
So this was requested from a Scottsdale firm called True Life Company. Uh, the application was filed by Symmetry Development. I would strongly suggest that everyone, uh, go to their website, um, and, and just take a look at, at what they're offering. Um, it looks to me to, uh, attract, uh, one type of individual that is not, uh, or very diverse. Um, and I have serious concerns over four hundred and five acres being sold for ten million dollars to be developed, um, for a very limited population. You know, I, I just don't even want to go into why the state has this land and why the trust was created, let alone the beneficiaries of K-12 universities, school for the deaf and blind. And they're going to sell four hundred, uh, and five acres for ten million dollars, or at least the opening bid would be that. It just doesn't make sense to me. And the quote from the, one of the websites is, "A wealth of luxury amenities and experience to inspire the human spirit." So, uh, I understand that, um, state land was entrusted with thirteen percent of Arizona total surface in this perpetual trust. And selling off, um, doesn't seem to be very perpetual for education. And I think many reasons why we're in the fix that we're in educational-wise. So I would hope that everyone takes some time and looks at that website, and I'm wondering, you know, is there any recourse for something like this? Or do we just say, "Welcome, Symmetry"? Thank you.
We have Ms. Odegaard? Mr. Odegaard? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move to Mr. Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I hope we get to hear from Mr. Odegaard here in a moment. So, yeah, when I, when I initially learned about this on Friday, I, I was one individual who sent city staff, um, an email with questions and concerns. I am so grateful to our city manager and to Dan and the rest of the staff who worked on this, um, in such short order to get us some, some better information. Uh, this has been very helpful in addition to the information I've been able to come up with on, on my own over the weekend. Um, when I, when I look at this parcel, I, I, I think it, it, for me, uh, there's a big contextual consideration, which is the Arizona Trail. And I think that needs to remain front and center as the conversation about how to honor the regional plan comes to fruition. I'm, I'm sure it's going to be a future council that has to really tackle these issues. Um, but right now, for the record, I, I'd like to say a couple of things, and, and some of them might even sound a little bit surprising to some listening. Uh, I understand that this, this parcel is slated for some kind of development, and it's been in the regional plan. I am, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but I do believe the regional plan was written before the Arizona Trail. I am, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but I do believe the regional plan was written before the Arizona Trail was officially running through here as, as a, you know, in the books with the Arizona Trail Association as, as, as the official route. And I do believe it's going to be very, very difficult to reroute the Arizona Trail somewhere else without a lot of, without it getting fairly complicated. You know, th- this, this region is going to be developed and I think it should be developed. I think we need to think very carefully about how we develop it. I would like to see some density in here actually, which is going to be surprising to some folks. And I think it comes out of the same concerns that Councilmember Whelan was expressing. I would love for the, the easement for the Arizona Trail to remain in perpetuity. And I would like to see it larger than the, what is it? I'm trying to look it up. Thirty feet right now, I think. If, if we could find, yeah, thank you, Dan. You know, my, I, the way we can have our cake and eat it too here for me is that we, we have a certain amount of density in here, but maybe trail through hikers aren't walking through a golf course or the backyards of residents that are right in that area. Even if they are, that's not entirely problematic. The Arizona Trail just next to this is passing through town, which is very dense and urban. And so this isn't like a parcel where we have a development happening thirty miles out in the middle of nowhere. You know, right now, I believe someone could camp in this area and that's very convenient because if you're, if you're busting through town through hiking, which is something that I've done, by the way, I, I don't, I know that some of you know that, but for context, I am an Arizona Trail through hiker. I did the whole thing in two and a half months, all eight hundred miles from north to south, and that was in, in twenty fifteen. And I remember coming through town and leaving town and getting over to the Fisher Point area. I, I, I actually walked home and, and camped in my bed and took a shower that night because I could. But a lot of people who use the Arizona Trail do camp at large in this area and they use it as a base camp to run back into town to grab some groceries or refill on items or grab a shower. You know, and we need to maintain the spirit of that moving forward. And I'm just one person speaking, of course. So I can't, you know, I, and Councilmember Whelan, I'm, I'm afraid that as, as valid as your concerns are, some of the things that you mentioned are totally out of our control as a, as a city council. Right? But anyway, as we're thinking through this, we need to recognize and remember the value of the Arizona Trail as, as it goes through Flagstaff as an economic amenity, as well as a tourism amenity and all those other things. And we should do our due diligence to protect this easement and maybe expand it as much as we can while also honoring the regional plan and the way that this area needs to be eventually developed. And it shouldn't be, you know, it shouldn't be a golf course or, or five or six houses out there on big luxury estates. I think if, if we're going to develop it at all, there should be a certain density to it. And I don't know if that takes it out of rural residential or not. I think all those details don't need to be hammered out right now, but just in general, I really think we need to protect this thoroughfare for the AZT while maintaining, you know, while acknowledging that this, this is a good place for Flagstaff to grow, but only if we're doing it in a very smart way that honors the amenity that we need to protect.
Ms. Odegaard.
Mr. Odegaard? Yep, I'm here. I'm here. Sorry, I've had a couple technical glitches. The only question I have is, has the City of Flagstaff purchased these land trusts in the past? And if so, can you give us a couple examples?
Yeah, I am aware of a couple parcels we've purchased. I believe Picture Canyon may have been a purchase from the land trust. And then I think Observatory Mesa. I think Nicole might be on the line. She could confirm if we purchased those at auction from the land trust.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Yes, this is Nicole. And I apologize, I'm getting tremendous feedback. But Dan is correct. We did purchase Pitcher Canyon from the State Land Department as well as Observatory Mesa from the State Land Department through the auction process.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Nicole.
And I believe we were the applicants in those situations, so we kind of started the process to put those two up for auction, is my understanding as well. Since we wanted it for open space. If I could just add a comment here, Mayor, if that's appropriate? And so talking with Martin Ince and Sarah Decter this morning, you know, we do see opportunities here to some of the things that Councilmember Aslan brought up. You know, we do have the thirty-foot easement for the trail, but as you, as we see a development plan, there may be opportunities to maybe relocate it or enhance it in a way that keeps it away from development and still, you know, maintains the recreational experience that people want on the trail. And so we do think those are opportunities we might have as we start to see development plans come forward. At this time, it would be premature, but that's something our staff is very aware of. And yeah, we want to preserve that experience. And Martin is also providing comment. I guess there's an effort underway right now by the Forest Service for a master plan for the Arizona Trail. And so we're providing comments on that as well.
Okay, Ms. Alice.
Well, well, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you to Councilmember Aslan for, for bringing this to our attention and, and of course, kudo to staff for, for putting this presentation in a jiffy. My concern with this potential investor slash development is how will this potential slash development impact the development our, of our JW Powell specific plan? And of course, as, as Councilmember Aslan eloquently stated that protecting the, the Arizona Trail and, and its surroundings.
Staff?
I'm sorry, was there a question there about how we're going to coordinate the?
Yeah, I heard a question regarding, yeah.
And so I think what you're going to see when we give you the update here in October is that we are kind of, you know, trying to see what kind of land uses will be available throughout this whole corridor on the, along the John Wesley Powell corridor. Because that is really important as to how the road is designed and what type of use can you anticipate? So I do think we're going to have really good coordination as we move forward in the public process. Which again, we're going to go from phase one, which is the writing of the plan to phase two, which Sarah Decter is going to lead. It's going to be a lot of community outreach, talking with the property owners, talking to the community. I think that's when we start a conversation with the property owner, if there's a successful bidder, about how this gets integrated into our regional plan and the JWP specific plan. Does that help at all with your question?
Yes, yes, for now, but I, 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 and thank you for, for, for is sharing that, you know, eventually staff will be coordinating with the winning bid either.
Well, and I guess specifically for the construction of JWP extension, you know, right now, what's anticipated is, I think it's about a sixty percent contribution from the property owners, which would require some type of improvement district. And we've not identified yet what vehicle would be used to do that. But looking at four nineteen funding, you know, the city anticipated some funding out of four nineteen, but really it requires the participation of these property owners, which Arizona State Land would not participate if they were the owner. So maybe that speaks a little more directly to your question about JWP being built. I think we do need a private owner here to help get that road constructed.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go back up to, is it Bryce Doty?
Hi, hi, Mayor. This is Bryce Doty. I'm the recently hired real estate manager. And I can provide some background on state lands if you'd like. And so I've dealt a lot with state lands in Colorado where I'm coming from, but it was, a lot of the western states all have state lands. And they were created at the time of entry into the union. And so any of the federal, the federal government gave mostly on a township, you, they would give them section sixteen and sections thirty-six, and they will give them in trust that they can only be used for educational purposes. So as Councilman Whelan did speak of, they are very limited in what they can do for that. And if they ever do want to sell any land, they kind of have to analyze any sale and they have to put it to a board of appeals to show that this, a potential sale would be worth what it's, what they could sell it for versus the, any other potential uses. And so that's just a very broad overview, but you can also look on the website and find all that information as well.
Hey, that wasn't my question, but thank you for that overview.
Sorry.
Yeah, that, that was not my question at all. So when Mr. Folk put up the notice of sale, it said that the beneficiary was the University of Arizona. And so my question was, why is it the University of Arizona and not the entire system? Because our university here is Northern Arizona University. So I was trying to find out, did the University of Arizona come up with a need? Do they have a need, which is what triggered the sale? And if so, why did it trigger the sale on this particular piece of property and not a piece of property that's in their area? That was my question.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And I definitely do not have that information, so I will get back to you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Folk?
I think this is probably a good opportunity for me to introduce you to our new real estate manager. His name is Bryce Doty. And he just spoke. So Bryce started with us, I think, maybe four weeks ago. So we're very happy to have him here. He and his wife just relocated from Denver. And again, it was a really competitive pool. And Bryce has quickly been brought up to speed on a bunch of real estate projects, including the Rio de Flag, a lot of water projects. And so we're very happy to have him and someday we will introduce him in the chambers to all of you. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, if there's nothing, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item. Welcome, Bryce. Let's go down to item number ten. This is the Flagstaff Police Department presentation to the city council. I'm going to ask the city manager to help us frame, or perhaps it is Ms., it's Ms. Anderson, to help us frame the presentation today. It's my understanding that we are going to have a series of three presentations with the Flagstaff Police Department. So if you could frame what tonight is, is about and help us with that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council.
Real quick, I apologize. There was a request for a break. And so perhaps what we'll do is we'll take a ten-minute break now. And then we will come back. We will have this discussion framed and then we will go through the discussion. How about that?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Okay, so I believe that we are back now from break. We were going to turn this over, I think, to our city manager and to frame the conversation for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'll be brief. There's a lot of discussion that lies ahead. And we want to hear from everybody on this and specifically those who are presenting. To give you the proper background for this, on August eighteenth, immediately after council's recess, council resumed and during its business that evening addressed one of, a couple of future agenda item requests. This one specifically had been advanced by Councilmember McCarthy back in June to place a future agenda, as a future agenda, a presentation to council by the police department regarding their policies and procedures relating to various events and, and response needs. The other, the fair item further asked for a presentation to include what other procedures may be used or other models may be followed in, in other jurisdictions whereby other professionals outside of law enforcement respond to calls that do not involve possible violence and do not necessitate an armed officer. And then the final part of that fair item included council's consideration of creating some form of public safety commission. Subsequent to the discussion that evening, it was suggested, suggested by council as a whole to expedite this matter, which we have done. So that is why it's before you here this evening. It was further suggested that the fair item or the topic be split into three sections or three elements. And that would span no, no less than three meetings with the council. The first would be, what are we doing now with regard to policies and procedures? That's the topic for this evening. The second would be what other cities and jurisdictions are doing with respect to nonviolent misdemeanor offenses and responses thereto. That is the subject of a future meeting. And then the third item concerning that of a possible safety commission will be the subject of the last meeting in this threefold discussion. So tonight, we have the first part of that for you. And with that as a backdrop, Madam Mayor and Council, I would like to turn this over to our interim police chief, Dan Musselman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
You can, thank you.
We will get started then. Thanks. This is Dan Musselman. I'm currently serving as the interim police chief. And with me are three other presenters for tonight. They include Mary Ann Sullivan, Deputy Chief Walt Miller, and our professional standard sergeant, Ryan Turley. Tonight's discussion, we'll talk about what we are doing now, and this will include policy procedure and statistics. And then October thirteenth, we'll be back before you, talking about alternate response and resource models. And then back again on October twentieth, talking about the Public Safety Commission. And the big question is, how do we police? So your police department seeks to police consistently, correctly, constitutionally, and with compassion. We establish our progressive culture through praise, training, awards, promotions, and of course, discipline. We do not condone racial profiling. We accept and investigate community complaints. And we seek to keep our officers well-trained in the best practices of policing. Next slide, please, Sienna. The topics we will be covering tonight include racial profiling, which I will take, as well as de-escalation and training. And then we'll turn it over to Mary Ann Sullivan for use of force, response to resistance. And then Deputy Chief Miller will talk about how we investigate community complaints. And then Sergeant Turley will wrap it up, talking about background investigations and how we keep problem officers from coming to work at our agency. I believe at this time, it is our hope to stop after each section for a brief question and answer. And I'm not sure if we were going to do public comment before each section or after each section. We hope you find- We hope you find the presentation hopeful. Helpful. Next slide. Racial profiling. The American Civil Liberties Union defines racial profiling as the discriminatory practice by law enforcement officials of targeting individuals for suspicion of crime based on the individual's race, ethnicity, religion, or national origin. The National Institute of Justice definition is racial profiling by law enforcement is commonly defined as a practice that targets people for suspicion of crime based on their race, ethnicity, religion, or national origin. Next slide, please. Our policy is called bias-based policing. And bias-based policing is strictly prohibited, and every member of this department is required to perform their duties in a fair and objective manner. They're also responsible for the prompt reporting of any suspected or known instances of bias-based policing to a supervisor and should intervene to prevent any bias-based actions by another member. Race, ethnicity, national nationality, religion, sex, sexual orientation, economic status, age, cultural group, disability, or affiliation with any similar identified group shall not be used as the basis for providing differing levels of police service. And this is all based in our policy. This is policy 402, and I believe you have the hyperlinks distributed throughout our presentation. Next slide. So how do we know we are not profiling? Our officers address behavior, and that's driving behavior or criminal behavior. All of our arrests are based on probable cause, and the officers have to outline the elements in their police report that supports the crime. Arrest numbers are not not part of our performance metrics. You do not get an above standard for having a high number of arrests, and you do not get a below standard for having a low number of arrests. We allocate our limited resources to geographical areas where crime is being committed, collisions are occurring, or the public is requesting assistance. We take appropriate discipline measures when officers are not biding by our values, mission, or policy. We do see one or two officers leave our agency every year for policy violations or during the disciplinary process. And we are not getting founded complaints. Next slide, please. We also have additional checks and balances. All of our patrol officers wear body cameras, and our supervisors audit those body cameras at will. Also, if we get a citizen complaint, we look at the body camera. We have a supervisor that signs off on every police report that's submitted, and the probable cause and elements of crime must be included in the police report to support the arrest. If that doesn't happen, our prosecutors dismiss the case, or our public defender seek to have the cases dismissed. We have very few civil litigation claims as an agency, and we have a red flag warning system in effect to catch officers who are struggling. So if we see officers with getting five or more complaints in a year-long period, getting involved in more vehicle pursuits, or getting involved in internal affairs, or having excessive use of force reports turned in, we sit down and talk to that officer and see what's going on, make sure there's no marital problems, make sure they're not struggling with their career choice, get get that officer the help they need. Also, every one of our use of force reviews is done by a deputy chief, as well as legal counsel, to ensure the actions were within policy and are legal under the law. Next slide, please. This graph, we've got a couple graphs here. This graph is of the total number of arrests we made in 2019. So if a person was arrested 20 times, they will be counted 20 times in this graph. And this is graph, this graph is one straight out of our annual report. This graph does not include warrant arrests, those with an unknown race, or those who identify with two or more races. And you can see the percentages there. This accounted for almost 6,000 total arrests, but the total number of individuals arrested was only about 3,800. So we'll go to the next slide, please. In this slide, we tried to pare it down just to city residents. So this also does not include warrant arrests. We had everyone who had a non-city resident address pulled out. Those with a P O box were pulled out, and it does not include those who use a shelter address. And so in this one, you can see the percentages are much lower. It ends up, this adds up to 2,007 individuals that were arrested during the course of the year, and it's broken down by race. And we do seek to police consistently, which means the law applies to everyone at the same time. And our decisions, again, to arrest are based on probable cause. Because street crime occurs in a public arena, our officers occasionally observe the criminal activity while on patrol. And a large number of calls for service to the police also occur from citizens who are also observing these behaviors in public. The elephant in the room is, we do have a substantial street population that's made up of Native American individuals who are involved in all aspects of our social services. If you talk to the Flagstaff Shelter Service, they will tell you they see a high percentage of these individuals. F U S D data shows that their student population is 25% Native American. In 2017, we looked at all of our crime victims, and we found that 32% of our crime victims were Native American. The Street to Home Partnership identified that 65 to 75% of their clients they serviced were Native American. The DUI drug court, they serviced 35% Native American from 2015 data. And an article in the Assessing Race Relations showed that an estimated 75% of every Navajo dollar is spent in border towns. So we know we're seeing more people come in and out of our community. Unfortunately, those folks, a lot of the higher utilizers, those involved in homelessness, poverty, substance abuse, and mental health are susceptible, more susceptible to the criminal justice system, unfortunately. If you go to the next slide, we broke down some common, some common arrest categories by race, DUI, aggravated assault, et cetera. I'd like to draw your attention to the domestic violence numbers. In 2019, we made 829 domestic violence arrests. Domestic violence occurs in the home, and most of the victims are the same race as the suspect. Domestic violence is also a mandatory arresting offense, so we have to arrest if we establish probable cause. You can see there that the percentage of Native American folks is quite high under domestic violence at 51%. The public consumption numbers, they speak directly to homelessness, poverty, and substance abuse. And that's why I feel those numbers are so high. But then if you look at shoplifting, even shoplifting numbers are high. And and the point that we want to make there is every shoplifting arrest starts as a citizen's arrest. Our police officers do not work in stores. It's the store people that work in stores, and they are the ones that call us. And then we address the shoplifting, and if there's probable cause, we make their arrest. It's also important to note that our community generates more calls to the police than average communities. Our call load per 1,000 population is at 581 calls. When we look at 30 benchmark cities that we compare ourselves to, they're at 443 calls per 1,000 population, which is a substantial bit less. Next slide, please. Unfortunately, people are cover of color, overrepresented in our homicide and other tragic data. These are homicides over the last five years. In the suspect column, 9% of our suspects were African-American, 18% were white, 27% native, and 36% Hispanic. When we look at our victims, it's pretty similar. 9% African-American, 55% white, 36% native, and zero Hispanic. And so it remains that this is not just a crime issue, it's a societal issue. Homelessness, poverty, substance abuse, and mental illness all contribute to the poor quality of life and the negative consequences of this lifestyle. 77% of our exposure deaths in the last five years have been of Native American citizens. 64% of our train pedestrian fatalities have victimized Native American citizens. And 61% of our fatal vehicle versus pedestrian collisions have involved our Native American citizens. They also seem to make up a large percentage of our crime victims of ag assaults, robberies, and simple assaults. Next slide, please. And I think we can pause here before we take on de-escalation training, if there's any questions.
Counsel. Counsel, do you have any questions for this this segment? I see Ms. Solis followed by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Musselman, for this first part of your presentation. I am curious about crimes and death related to the train tracks and slash train station. Do you have any information available?
Mayor and Councilmember Solis, I do not have specific data for the train station. I was referring to train pedestrian fatalities, which happened all throughout the city limits.
And what is that number again, sir?
That number was 19, I'm sorry, nine out of 14 of our train pedestrian fatalities involve Native American victims.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Chief Musselman. Thanks for being with us, and thanks for the presentation thus far. Couple of questions. So it's very clear that we have a situation on our hands regarding our unsheltered relatives or Native American population, and in addressing their needs has been something we've struggled with, obviously. I was just wondering, has there been any efforts to reach out to consultants who work with this population as to how to best support them, including our tribal partners and tribal governments?
Yes, Vice Mayor, this has been a problem in our community for the last 25, 30 years. The Criminal Justice Coordinating Council is working regularly on trying to find solutions. And we we've picked a lot of the low-hanging fruit. We've got Veterans Court, Homeless Court, Substance Abuse Courts, a lot of those things. We've at least got a shelter in town now, which we didn't have 10 years ago. We're doing a lot. There's a lot of people moving. The the need is just so great. We can go on these calls, we can triage people, but at the end of the day, we have, our officers and our medical personnel have very few places to take them. And no, no true day shelter, for lack of a better term, alcohol reception center that we can take people that may be mildly inebriated, but not necessarily in need of advanced ER-type medical care. So lots of, lots of discussions going on in the community that have been around forever, and lots of resources needed to try and help manage this program problems. And we're, we've always been at the table. We're involved in many agencies that seek help for our most vulnerable. But the need is great, and the resources just aren't here right now.
Thank you for that, Chief. And you know, one of the issues I've seen in our community, and this is more of a comment to council, is just that a lot of our support services are are not of of people who reflect the people who we're trying to serve. And and that's part of the issue, you know, to a, to a degree. And then, Chief, my other question for you is, in regards to the one to two officers who leave the agency on a yearly basis, is there anything we can do to catch these individuals before they become officers? Is there, I'm guessing it's a ongoing, you know, battle to to try to figure out, you know, who's going to be a good officer and who's not. But before they really put on the badge and carry a weapon and address our public, is there, is there more we can do to to filter them out ahead of time?
Yes, Vice Mayor, and that's part of the presentation later, when we talk about background investigations. We do try our best to hire for character. And a lot of, to let the cat out of the bag, we usually only hire one out of every 17 applicants due to other problems that makes them not a good fit for us. They've posted something on social media that's disparaging to a certain ethnic group. And yeah, we're just, we're not, I'm not willing to put this agency's reputation on the line just to hire someone that will be a problem child later. So I think we'll get into some of that towards the end of this presentation. And to answer your earlier comment, yes. A large percentage of our street population in need is Native American, and we definitely need whatever shelter program, there needs to be some Native American connection to it to help these folks be more successful.
Thank you, Chief. And then a last question for you on this section is, in regards to that board that oversees or, you know, reviews the complaints that are filed to our FPD, is that board diverse, do you know, in terms of ethnicity and race?
Vice Mayor, I'm a little confused about what board you're talking about. Are you talking about the Use of Force Review Board? Or are you talking about our internal process as far as reviewing use of force instances or complaint?
You know, I thought there was a board that oversaw the complaints that were filed. Maybe it is the use of force complaints. I thought it was complaints in general, though. Am I getting confused?
I, I do believe you might be confused. We do have some other, we'll be talking about the Use of Force Review Board. That is after one of our officers involved in, is involved in a shooting. We bring in experts, professionals from other agencies. They review it. They look at our policy. They look at their policies. They confirm or deny that our policy is best practice. And then they pretty much vote on whether the officer's actions were in policy or out of policy. They can make policy recommendations. And that includes a legal advisor and representatives of peer agencies to do that review. What you might be thinking also of is the Citizens Liaison Committee, which they do not bring complaints to them, but they do not review the complaints. But if they have a question on a complaint, we will review it with them in the interest of transparency.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll leave that question there for now. We can come back to it at a later time when I have more better clarity. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to go to Ms. Whelan, followed by Ms. Jodogard.
Thank you, Chief, for being here. A question, and and I've seen you work over the years on this issue. And you've worked hard, and I want to thank you for that. I'm hoping that through our discussions and and you educating not only council, but the community that will be able to be solution-based. So with that in mind, my question is, if you could take away all the social service calls that you do, so mental health, intoxication, all of those calls that are are just so redundant in in your day, what would that look like for savings on on person power, officer power? What would that look like on overtime budget? What would that look like in a decline of your responses? Have you run those numbers, kind of like if if everybody was doing what they needed to do instead of the police force doing everything? What would that look like? Does that make sense?
It, it. It does, Councilmember, and I appreciate the question. It's hard to put a number on that because when a homicide happens, or heaven forbid, a school shooting, it's all hands on deck. I can tell you that our response times are some of the best in the nation. And anytime we talk about, you know, if we reduce ten percent of your call load, how much money does that free up? And well, it it doesn't necessarily free up officers because you would still need your officers to be school resource officers and airport screenings, et cetera. It would help if we were able to get some of our super users into treatment so they would not be back out. But unfortunately, some of these super users, when they are under influence, are very violent. And if you know any ER nurses, they've got stories galore of being assaulted and wanting police to come back up. So it's just, it's a hard question. It's a hard question to give a good answer to with actual facts and figures.
Well, you know, Chief, I'm thinking that down the road, we are going to need to have conversation as to if we did say tariffs took over that first response, kind of like other programs that that we've looked at in in Oregon. Or if if we had people going on that response, we're going to need to know not only in your department, but also with the fire, how that will impact calls. So maybe not now, but in the future, we need to know that if we took away this one type of call, what would that mean to your organization? And and can we justify doing that? So so it's not only budgetary thing, but it it will be, you know, I see the charts in that. But I'm also thinking, what if we did do something that impacted those charts and it was positive? What would it look like? So maybe you could just ponder that for other presentations, or perhaps other council members can weigh in on their thoughts about, you know, just kind of proposing what it might look like. So thank you.
You're welcome, Councilmember. And just so you know, we do have an officer going down on a field trip to Mesa PD to see how their crisis response team works and what percentage of calls that's pulling away from the rest of the first responders. And that'll probably be more better covered in the next presentation on alternate response plan. So we hope to have some of that data by then to be able to share.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Ottegaard?
Yeah, and I was just going to follow up with that line of thought about the calls. I know when there is a call made for service, that every call gets a response. I assume there's got to be a huge liability factor that the call is not responded to and the need is not addressed. Maybe you could speak to that for a moment concerning liability?
Well, perhaps more painful than liability is when they all email Mayor and Council, and then I get my bell rung. But yes, very much so for liability. And a lot of the alternate response plans, they still send an officer, but they send one in plainclothes. That way, if things get rough, we're not getting social workers and mental health people hurt. So there's a bunch of different alternate response plans out there. But yes, every call that comes in, we seek to send an officer to make sure it's safe. We're a full-service agency. And unfortunately, we're the social service agency of last resort because we're the only one that's open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And so the officers are taking on more calls, specifically calls that they're not always trained or the best equipped to handle. So thank you for the question.
I'm going to go to our City Attorney, and then I have a question. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Ottegaard, and thank you, Chief. I just wanted to chime in on that. Mayor, Council, we plan on having an executive session on several questions that involve legal issues that could arise or legal questions that arise tonight. That executive session was initially initially thought to be something we would schedule for September twenty-second. It will likely be October thirteenth. Either way, Councilmember Ottegaard, I just want to make sure you're aware, we've made note of that question. From the legal perspective, we'll address that and any others that come up that require legal advice tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
So I have three questions, Chief. So I want to go back, first of all, to the the arrest, the amount of arrests here in Flagstaff compared to other cities. So you said that here in Flagstaff, per one thousand people, we have about five hundred and eighty-one arrests compared to other similar communities where they have four hundred and forty-three per thousand.
Mayor, this is Dan. That it's calls for service. We have a higher number of calls for service than they do not arrest.
Okay, a higher number of calls per service. Now, is everything exactly the same? Do they have the same issues that we have? I'm just trying to find out, why do we have more calls for service here than in other communities?
I would venture to guess it's because we're a college town and we have a very large transient population. We have a lot of liquor establishments compared to others. In those thirty benchmark cities we compare themselves to, not all of those are college towns, certainly not all of them are border towns. So the data is a little different, but there they have a lot of benchmarks that, you know, we beat them on. Other, like our response time is quicker. Fortunately, we make two and a half times more DUI arrests than they do. And our officers take more calls, which makes sense since our community generates more calls.
Okay, so with regards to the CJCC, are there any tribal members on the CJCC?
Mayor, I don't believe so. I think they have come and done presentations a time or two, but I don't believe there's. Actually, I take that back. Supervisor Fowler, I think, was on it here recently. But I think that's the only one I can remember.
Supervisor Fowler would have been on as a member of the Kokona County Board of Supervisors. I'm trying to find out, do we have any partners that are on the CJCC, which I believe is overseen by the county, that are coming from any of our indigenous nations as a part of that group? So I'm thinking that's a no.
No, Mayor, I don't believe there are.
And then I know you're going to get into the alternative responses. And when we talk about that, I'm interested as as into who pays for those. The alternative responses, when we talk about them, if you can provide information, is it the city that pays for that? Do they have partners that help pay for that? Are there grants that help pay for that? Or is the bulk of having to pay for this entire system? Because it seems right now the city of Flagstaff, I guess through its police department, is actually paying for the bulk of this system, kind of. Is that correct?
That is correct. And the limited information I've looked at so far, it spreads the gamut. The San Diego Serial Inebriate Program is counties, cities, multiple police departments. And then other places like Kahoots, it seems more run by a nonprofit. So the the model spread the gamut, it just based on what communities are able to pull together. But we can get into that more in the next presentation.
Okay, I'm definitely interested in trying to figure out who pays. So thank you. I don't see any other questions. I do see that Mr. Harris mentioned again that Lena Fowler was on the CJCC. Again, I believe she was on in her capacity as a Kokona County Board of Supervisor. And I was wondering if there was someone from one of our indigenous nations that was sitting on in their capacity. So thank you. Please continue.
Okay, the next topic, I'm going to take this one as well and then turn you over to the rest of my team. This is on de-escalation training. And so what is de-escalation? De-escalation is taking action or communicating communicating verbally or nonverbally during a potential force encounter in an attempt to stabilize the situation and reduce the immediacy of the threat so that more time, options, and resources can be called upon to resolve the situation or with a reduced response. De-escalation may include the use of techniques such as command presence, advisements, warnings, verbal persuasion, tactical repositioning, or inviting others into the conversation. And so your police department is always trying to take advantage of diversity, de-escalation, and response to resistance training for our officers. De-escalation is more of a philosophy than a specific training. And here we try and weave it into a multitude of trainings, whether it's firearms, defensive tactics, crisis intervention, et cetera. I wanted to share with you that in 2019, members of our department attended over twenty-four thousand hours worth of training. And this averages out to two hundred of two hundred hours per officer. And then I go back to that benchmark cities that we compare ourselves to, and they showed an average of under a hundred hours per officer per year. So although we do have to work within our budget constraints, we've been very gracious for the resources that city leadership and council has provided us to keep our officers well-trained. As officers, we are trained to, starting in the Police Academy, to de-escalate incidents as quickly as possible. Upon our initial response, we are allowed and authorized under the law to respond to resistance within the law and pursuant to our policy to gain compliance. However, once that compliance or custody is established, our officers are required to stop using force, and they often start assessing for the suspect's medical needs. Our training is continual, it's ongoing, and it's constantly updated with an emphasis on protecting life and safety. The only caveat here is there are some people that are evil and just do not want to be de-escalated. And they will trick officers into thinking they're being escalated in order to harm the officer. So it can be a double-edged sword. Thankfully, those are few and far between, and we haven't run into a whole lot of those. Go ahead and go to the next slide. These next two slides just show some of the classes that we've been able to offer to our officers and and some of our non-sworn staff involving unconscious bias and or de-escalation. And I know there'll probably be a question on it. So we, our line item for training in FY twenty was forty-five thousand. And with the Council blessing, we were asked to do some more de-escalation training this year. And so our training line item has now been allocated closer to seventy thousand dollars. And if you go to the next slide, just shows additional trainings that we've been able to offer. And some of these have been expensive, but very well received by our officers and as well as community members. The Fair and Impartial Policing webinar, we did a four-hour block. And I believe some council members were actually able to attend that. And we all thought that was very impactful for all of us. I will make one comment here that if the police are defunded, usually the first thing to get cut is the training budget and the training. And that's the one thing we probably need more than anything else in order to keep our officers tactically fit. So that's all I had for this section. Does anyone have any questions on de-escalation or any of the trainings presented?
We have Ms. Wieland.
Chief, I know in in several community conversations, and I think even you and I have talked about this. Is there any effort made that the trainers would actually come from our community? Knowing our community and knowing the needs of our community? Or I know the the Fair and Impartial Policing, those individuals were from outside of the community? So I'm wondering, what are the thoughts or the policies of actually getting individuals to do the training that know our community?
Thank you, Councilmember Wieland, for the question. We have used people within our community. We've used professors from NAU, we've used local community activists. The value in using law enforcement-specific trainers is then the officers actually get official credit. Officers by state regulation have to attend so many accredited hours per year. And not everyone, well, most people in the community aren't authorized for that accreditation. So it is somewhat limited. We were able to get some outside instructors post-Arizona Peace Officer Certification approved. It was quite a lengthy process and a lot of hoops to jump through. But we were able to do that with the cultural awareness training done by the Navajo Human Rights Commission.
How many hours a year do your officers need to take additional training? Do you know?
The requirement is sixteen hours, and that's broken out eight hours proficiency and eight hours continuing. So proficiency is like driving, doing physical stuff, driving, shooting, defensive tactics. And the continuing is classrooms such as de-escalation. It could be reviewing laws, reviewing policy procedure, going over use of force, those types of things.
Thank you.
We have Ms. Solis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, can you speak to the department's experience in the past and what your plans are in the future about community policing efforts and the Neighborhood Watch?
Yeah, so community policing is one of the cornerstones of our department. It is an organizational philosophy that all members buy into. And we are always seeking out opportunities to interact in the community. And we've seen our community change. We used to do a lot of neighborhood meetings and block watches, ice cream socials, those kinds of things. And our numbers just slowly dwindled. So we've gone to doing some new things with our Citizens Liaison Committee. We go out and do community support meetings, and we'd usually pick a topic, advertise it really well, meet at a community center and and hit the topics. We did one on mental health, know your rights, gangs in Flagstaff, First Amendment assemblies, et cetera. But we've also seen some value in some new things. So here recently, we kicked off Coffee with a Cop. We've had two or three of those so far. And those seem to be pretty productive because it's not a formal presentation, it's just officers coming and mingling. And people feel more relaxed. And we find they're more willing to, as you're having just a casual conversation, to tell you about what problems they're seeing in their neighborhood or what concerns they have. So that has been huge. And then we've also started doing High School Career Days here in-house, partly to help get more kids interested in law enforcement careers, but also to let them know that we're human. And, you know, you sit down, you talk to people, you show them what you do. You talk about why you do it and continues a lot of great interaction with the kids. And a lot of them signed up to come back the next year, but unfortunately, we had to cancel it due to COVID. And then our Citizens Police Academy is probably another one of our big flagship programs. And we're just getting that started back up. Obviously, we're going to have to limit our occupancy to go through it. But that gives our citizens an insight into policing. And they hit the high topics, use of force, DUI investigations, criminal investigations. And we talk a lot about our mission to protect and preserve life. So I hope I've answered your question.
Very much so, Chief. Please count me in for the Citizen Police Academy and your avid Please count me in for the Citizen Police Academy and your avid supporter for engaging the community and community policing. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, any other questions? Please continue.
Okay. I will now turn it over to Mary Ann Sullivan for the Response to Resistance section of our program.
Mayor, councilmembers, can you hear me? Yes. Okay. This presentation is actually part of what I do with our Citizens Academy. So if you do end up taking that, you'll be very familiar with this. This is kind of the second half of the presentation I do with them. The first half, what I usually do is go over Arizona law, what it is in regards to self-defense and what everyday citizens can do, to give them a baseline and understanding when we then talk about how officers are authorized to use force. And so this discussion too, Response to Resistance, I always like to start to kind of give a framework to everybody with this kind of discussion here. So Shannon, if you could forward. There you go. Why do we have laws in the first place? And so I think it's important to kind of have that framework and context of we have laws to deal with, you know, social issues. Yourselves as the legislators here for our city, if there's issues, you identify that we should have a law to address that. And kind of some of the responses that I get to these questions is, so we don't have chaos. So we know who's supposed to go when the light is green and who's not supposed to go when the light is red, so that we can regulate in some way the behaviors and functions of our citizens. Next, Shannon. And so what we also need to consider is what happens then if we don't enforce those laws? So one of the questions I generally ask in the Citizens Academy is, does anyone have children? As a parent, you know that you need to set rules for your children and you need to, you know, enforce those if there's kind of violations. If you don't enforce those, then your children kind of learn that, hey, they really don't need to follow those rules. And it's somewhat similar for the greater society. You know, if somebody knows they can speed on a certain street and there's never any police around, then that's what they're going to do. Sometimes, you know, simply having a police presence, like a car which mayor may not have a police officer in it, may slow somebody down. So, you know, understanding that we need the laws to address certain social, you know, situations, and then understanding that we do actually need that enforcement arm. We unfortunately, you know, our society, we don't just automatically follow the law. And so that is why we have to have those. The next. Thank you. And when an officer has probable cause to arrest somebody, how should they accomplish that arrest? And so generally, and 95% of the time, an officer tells an individual, you know, you're under arrest, please turn around, put your hands behind your back, and that's what happens. The person complies, and they're placed under arrest, they're, you know, cited or released and/or booked into jail. And that's, you know, how it generally occurs. But there are those 5% where it doesn't occur that way. Forward, please. So what should an officer do then if somebody refuses to be arrested? And this is where we come into responding to that resistance. And that's why our policy is titled that, is because we want to focus our officers on what is the resistance that you are coming up against? What is the behavior? So it's really the behavior that the officers are focused on. And the question is, should an officer, if somebody says, well, you know, I don't want to be arrested, I don't want to go to jail today, is that officer supposed to say, oh, okay, well, then, you know, I just won't do it? And that is not how we should be enforcing our laws. And unfortunately, there are directives, and arrest warrant is in order to an officer to arrest a person and bring them before the judge who issued that warrant. So officers do not have a choice when somebody has an arrest warrant. And there are some laws that are very specific, and Chief Musselman mentioned one of those, domestic violence laws. Because of the nature of domestic violence incidents, when somebody, when an officer has probable cause to believe that domestic violence offenses occurred and there's an injury that has resulted, it's mandatory that person be taken to jail. So when that happens, the officer does have to arrest. Next. Forward, please. So who really decides then how the arrest will go and, of course, will be necessary? And really, it is not the officer. It is the person being arrested that makes that decision. So when the officer says you are under arrest, and that person pulls away, and that person, you know, takes action to prevent the officer from arresting them, that person has now decided how that arrest is going to go. If that person complies and puts their hand behind their back and allows the officer to place them in handcuffs, that person has decided how that arrest happens. So the person being arrested, when they decide if they're going to resist or not, they make the decision whether or not that officer is going to have to use force. And so that kind of gives a context, I think, to the discussion of our policy and where it goes from there. Next slide, please. So what we have done with our policy, and we made revisions to the policy in 2016, and changed the title to Response to Resistance, we added levels of resistance. Forward, please. So the first one being a compliant person. What is a compliant person? And that's a person who's contacted by an officer who acknowledges direction or lawful orders given and offers no resistance or aggression. And like I said, that's kind of 95% of the contacts. The passive resistance person, the subject is not complying with an officer's commands, is uncooperative, but is taking only minimal physical action, action that's not directed at the officer, to prevent an officer from placing the subject in custody and taking control. So examples of this are somebody dead weight, they literally go limp, and/or they're locking arms with another person or holding on to a fixed object. So these are all what we consider passive resistance, passive because they're not necessarily actively doing something, but it is still resistance to those lawful orders of that officer trying to take somebody into arrest. Next slide. And forward. Thank you. So defensive resistance. So this is the subject's verbal or physical actions are intended to prevent an officer from placing the subject in custody and taking control but are not directed at harming the officer. And so examples are this: they run away, they refuse to give their officer their hands, the officer may, you know, reach out and grab their hand, and they pull their hand away. And so this, and when we talk about later, you know, levels of force, the reason we kind of have these definitions, and this is one area we've been focusing on with our officers in the last six months or so, is to really have a great understanding, the difference between this defensive resistance and, forward, please, Shannon, to this next, which is active aggression. So the subject displays the intent to harm the officer themselves or another person and prevent an officer from placing the subject in custody and taking control. Examples of this are the person taking a fighting stance, the person actually punching or kicking or attacking that officer with weapons. So the main difference between these two, and the focus we ask the officers to make is what is the actions and the behavior of that individual that you are dealing with? What are they, and how can you respond to those? And if you forward one more time, we then have aggravated active aggression. So the subject actions are likely to result in the death or seriously body harm to the officer themselves or another person. And so both with the active aggression and aggravated active aggression, you have to also understand that it includes the intent to harm themselves. So if we are dealing with a suicidal subject, they could fall within this active aggression or aggravated active aggression category as well. So it's not just an intent to harm somebody else, it could be the intent to harm themselves. So now we go look at the next slide. We talk about our levels of force. And specifically, we have a low level, which is mere officer presence, like I talked about before, sometimes just merely having an officer in a particular area, changes driving behavior, could prevent maybe crimes from happening, any verbal directions, empty hand control techniques, soft and hard control techniques. Those are what we consider our low level. Forward, please. And then we have our intermediate force. This is our pepper spray, impact weapons, taser, less lethal munitions such as rubber bullets or beanbag bullets, and hard hand, empty hand techniques. This would also include our pepper ball guns as well. And forward. And then we have deadly force, which at this point, we have our firearms, which is authorized in response to aggravated active aggression, and the carotid restraint control hold, and any improvised means of defense. So if an officer really is in a knock-down, drag-out fight for their life, they're not necessarily limited to these two things. If there's something within their control that may help save them and prevent them from succumbing to any sort of deadly force being used upon them. Next slide, please. So what I wanted to do is kind of give you an idea. If you have somebody who's compliant and passive resistance, then the types of force that can be used are officer presence, verbal commands, handcuffs. If you have that passive resistance person who literally has gone limp, then the only option the officers have is to really just pick that person up and carry them. And so those are the types of force that are authorized to be used on a compliant person or on a passive resistance person. So forward, please. If you're looking at defensive resistance, then impact push for somebody who's running away from the officer, pressure points, body strikes, pepper spray. You can also, under our policy, officers can point and threaten to use a taser on an individual who is displaying defensive resistance, but they are not allowed to actually use the taser unless the person is displaying active aggression. So if you forward one more time. So active aggression, officers are authorized to use a baton, taser, head and neck strikes, our pepper ball guns to impact, and beanbag rounds. So there's the difference, you know, the major difference that we focus on with our officers is understanding that they can only use those higher levels of force, those baton, those, you know, taser, those types of weapons, when they are being attacked, when somebody is coming after them. And let me just finish this slide, and then we'll go to your question, Councilmember Aslan. And so if you forward one more time, Shannon. So then we have our active, aggravated active aggression. Obviously, officers can then use firearm, the carotid hold, and again, those improvised defense measures. So understanding that what our policy really focuses on is what the person is doing and what threat that poses to the officer. And so really, an officer being able to respond with the baton or taser to somebody who's displaying that active aggression, who's trying to harm the officer, is really not all that different than what a regular citizen can do in defending themselves against an attack. So the question, I believe, that what is empty hand control, soft and hard control techniques? And so soft control techniques are standard handcuffing, wrist locks, and touch pressure points. Hard control techniques, using the hands, knees, or feet directed at pressure points or using takedown techniques. Does that answer your question?
Mr. Aslan?
Yeah, thank you. Just in general, I think a lot of these terms are very familiar within the police force, but I don't think they are necessarily obvious to either myself as a council member or other members of the public watching. So if you guys can take the time to define your terms a little bit more as you go through some of these things. I have no idea what an impact push looks like. I think I might know what a body strike looks like, but I could use a little bit more clarity and context for a lot of this stuff.
Sure. For, and this is Mary Ann Sullivan, by the way. There was a question as to who the speaker is. I'm the legal advisor for the Flagstaff Police and Fire Departments. So, yeah, impact push, generally what that is, is if somebody is coming at you or in your space, you can push them away from you with, basically, it's a kind of a hard-force impact to create that distance, usually with open hands. Sometimes it can be used in a foot pursuit type situation where, you know, kind of the only couple ways to end a foot pursuit would be to tackle a person or to be able to get close enough and to impact push them so that they go down. So those are, that's kind of the definitions of those. Are there any other definitions at this point that you would like to have covered?
Let's go to... Mr. Aslan, did you get your questions answered?
Yes, thank you.
Let's go to Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, for your presentation. It seems as though the turning point is when the officer says you're under arrest. And then, as you said, it then becomes the choice of the individual on how they want that arrest carried out. Is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, generally, you know, the officer doesn't just automatically decide they want to use force. And in general, if they can avoid a conflict, it's going to result in them not being injured and the person not being injured. That's the better choice. But what, the officer doesn't always get that choice. It's the person who's being arrested who has that choice.
And I agree with you in another statement was a normal citizen. But what we're tending and what the officers are tending to deal with, as we all know, are more mental health, intoxication, drug addiction, where aggression is not always based in thinking about well-being. So if, do you understand what I'm saying? If you would come to me, having my mental faculties, I get that it's up to me as to how the direction's going to go. But if I'm paranoid schizophrenic or have any mental health issues, or say wasn't even abused before by an officer, that's going to change the whole dynamic. And so my question is, where is the space to understand that the dynamic changes, like, for the officer? Oh, I'm not dealing with someone that is understanding my directions. Oh, I'm dealing with an individual that is so frightened, and I have no idea why. Those kinds of things.
Right. And, you know, sometimes they may have that background and that information, depending on if they've had contact with that person before, which in our community we sometimes do. But sometimes they don't. So they're arriving with very limited information that they've been provided by whatever the call came in as from dispatch. You know, dispatch is relaying information that they're getting from a caller. So they may have very limited information when they arrive. And so they're having to basically rely on their training and experience that, you know, we've been able to hopefully provide to them to make those assessments quickly. We did very recently just have a training to go over some changes we did make to our mental health policies and our civil commitment policies to really focus the officers in on what's the behavior and what's the reason for the behavior, you know, and basically, you know, focusing on, well, and what's the best resolution to that? And utilizing more the mental health, you know, services we have available to us. But part of the problem is too, is that simply because that person is in that state doesn't make them any less dangerous to that officer or the individuals that they're dealing with. It does make them probably harder to de-escalate. And that's what Chief Musselman already mentioned, is that you cannot always de-escalate people. And I think that that's something that our television has done a huge disservice to our law enforcement community, is that you always see them able to talk down the person with the knife or to get, you know, somebody to listen and cooperate. But as you've indicated, sometimes people are in such a state that that's really not possible. And despite that fact, the officers are still expected to make that situation safe and try and control that individual and take them into custody, either for taking them, you know, for having committed a crime, or take them into custody and get them treatment through the Guidance Center or Behavioral Health Services.
Thank you.
And I see that Councilmember Parthi had a question about carotid hold. We have specific slides that we're going to go in-depth into that, so if we could hold off on that, we'll address that. So if we could hold off on that, we'll address that.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Counsel, are there any more specific questions to this section of Ms. Sullivan's presentation? I wanted to, okay, I wanted to go back. Let's go to the attorney first. I wanted to go back to something Mr. Aslan said, then forward to the vice mayor. So attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to check in and remind everyone on council that if you do have a question, please verbalize it. I know that the speakers presenting tonight have been very quick to see what's in the comments. However, it is a public meeting and we need to make sure we're verbalizing those questions.
Okay, and understanding that, I'm going to go to Mr. McCarthy so he can verbalize that question that he had. Then I want to go back to something Mr. Aslan said, and then I'll move forward. Mr. McCarthy?
All right, got my mic back on. Actually, I have two questions. Could you discuss a carotid, however you say that, hold? And I understand that you're going to talk about that later, so we can talk about that later. My second question is, I presume that it's your policy that once you've used these forces, be they very severe or otherwise, that once the person is under control, handcuffed or put in the back of a car or whatever, that you transition to backing off so that you don't, you know? We had a case in Minneapolis where a policeman put his knee on someone for 10 minutes or whatever it was. And I presume that that wouldn't happen in Flagstaff. Once the person would be under control, that we would, you know, secure them with handcuffs or whatever and then back off. Is that true?
That is true. That is correct. It is our policy that you use the force to control the threat at that time. And we're going to talk a little bit about some more legal definitions that are contained in our policy and how uses of force are evaluated by the courts. But yes, once that, you know, situation is contained, the person is in handcuffs, then everything changes. At that point, you know, depending on the circumstances, our officers are trained to render aid if there's been an injury to, you know, ensure that the person that they're dealing with, if they've, you know, been involved in basically a fight, have exerted themselves. If they are in any sort of physical distress, there are concerns, especially with somebody who may be under the influence of drugs or alcohol, how that can impact them once they have exerted themselves further. And so, yes, that is very much a part of our policy. And I agree that I don't believe anything like what happened in Minneapolis would happen here in Flagstaff with our officers.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
I want to just go back and just mention that, you know, Mr. Aslan had said that, you know, there needs to be definitions or that sometimes we use words, or words, we don't necessarily define them, our statements. And he had mentioned, you know, empty hand control, soft and hard control, those types of things need to be defined. I would just say that I know there's a lot of people who might not be watching this tonight, but might go back and view this presentation or even read the slides per se. And it might be helpful if we added that, those definitions and the others that we might encounter with the presentation, even if it's another slide at the end of this, so they have that.
Mayor, our policy defines that and we put the hyperlinks within the presentation. So, you know, if somebody were to click on that, they would be able to go through and see all of those in the policy. But we can, you know, keep track of some of those questions on definitions and see if we can add those as well.
I think that while we can click on the link, one of the problems that we experience is that people don't necessarily take the next step, right, and click on those links. And instead, they make assumptions as to what it is or what it is not. It might be that the definitions that council is asking for could be put in a separate sheet and be available so people can just like, here is those definitions. Or even a statement being made that, hey, if you have any questions about definitions, please click on the link. I think we need to be crystal clear with people about it.
Yes, we will do that, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Mary Ann, for the presentation thus far. Just a quick comment regarding the SISN Academy. I'm just wondering, given the circumstances with COVID and the capacity concerns and private public interest in that academy, especially in the first, you know, in the near future, I'm just wondering if it was possible to do that, you know, electronically as well and have that be something that people can stream into or tune into virtually? And you'll need to answer that at this moment, but something to think about as you set that up.
Thank you.
That's all I see. Thank you.
If we go to the next slide, it actually does specifically discuss the carotid control technique. So it is a significant physical control technique that is designed to subdue an individual by reducing the flow of oxygenated blood to the brain by compressing the carotid arteries and rendering a person unconscious. And so that is the technique that is a part of our policy here. This technique is not what is considered a chokehold. However, it might look like that to somebody who is watching or somebody who is not trained. A chokehold is defined as a physical maneuver that restricts an individual's ability to breathe for the purposes of incapacitation. And so the carotid hold technique is designed to gain compliance by causing that sort of uncomfortable pain. It is not designed to restrict somebody's ability to breathe. However, in our policy, it can only be used in very significant situations where an officer is faced with deadly force. And only officers who've received proper training on how to apply the technique may use that technique under the policy. Next slide?
I think we might have a question on that.
Right, and then the next slide also addresses this further. So I just want to get through these couple and then we can have some questions. So officers are authorized to use the hold only in the following circumstances. So the subject is engaged in aggravated active aggression, which is deadly force, and the officer would be authorized to use deadly force. The officer perceives the subject's actions are likely to result in the death or serious physical injury to the officer, a third person, or even to the individual themselves. And these actions may include the use of a firearm, a blunt force object, an edged weapon, or through the use of physical force. And then next, when the subject is actively assaulting an officer or another person and the subject's actions are likely to result in death or serious physical injury to the officer, a third person or themselves, and other control methods have been exhausted or the officer reasonably believes other methods would be ineffective. And so we really set out here the parameters under which an officer is authorized to use this very significant type of hold, even though it is not a chokehold. So again, it can only be used in these really extreme circumstances. The policy also states that if the officer starts to apply this type of hold and it can become something where somebody's airway is being restricted that they are to immediately stop and not use it. So that is also part of the policy and the training. And so if we have questions then now on these couple of slides.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. Mary Ann, can you tell me, where does the policy come from? Is it based at a state level? Of, I'll just leave it at that. Where does the policy come from?
So basically, where we start with policy is we always start with the law. So it's what does state law allow, what does federal law allow? And then it kind of goes from there to, then we say, okay, what we can do under those? And then it's basically, it's kind of personal. It's within each department to decide. You know, there are departments that allow tasers to be used in situations we do not allow tasers to be used in. So, you know, it depends on, you know, your own individual agency's comfort level. We also, with our policies, have a company called Lexipol that helps with us having them all together, having them all in the same format, allowing us very easily to amend those. They make recommendations twice a year on any changes that should be made or updates to the policies. If there's new laws that come out, that could change our policies. And so we have to, you know, be aware of those. When we went through and did kind of these major revisions in 2016, another thing that we do is we look at other agencies' policies, you know, make a comparison. When we started our body worn camera program in 2014, we were very early on, you know, one of very few agencies in the state that had body worn cameras. And so I looked at policies from all over the country, you know, to kind of come up with what we felt was appropriate. There are sometimes model policies that are developed by agencies. The International Associations of Chiefs of Police sometimes come out with model policies to kind of take a look at, as do some other, you know, training agencies, to be able to kind of have a basis on where to start. The FBI National Academy also has model policies. So when we're kind of looking at, you know, say, a brand new area, like we were with body cameras, we kind of pulled from everywhere and to be able to do that. And so that's kind of how we develop them. We're constantly reviewing the policies and looking at them, especially when we're dealing with use of force. It's a high liability area, obviously. And as, you know, an attorney for the city, that's a major concern that I have in looking at, you know, and making sure that our policies really are what is considered best practice within the law enforcement realm.
Thank you for that. And, you know, I've noticed that other councils throughout the U.S. have made decisions to, for example, take away or say, no longer can that carotid hold be used. Is that the same in our city?
The same, I don't know that I understand your question.
Could counsel have say in whether that carotid hold would be used or not?
You know, that's a question that we're going to have to address, I think, in executive session with you.
But Councilmember Whelan, if I could weigh in. So we have very few tools to deal with someone who is actively active aggression or aggravated active aggression coming after an officer. So if you take away, so right now, we have three tools we can use at that level. One is our firearm, one is a carotid, and the other one's a taser. And so if we start taking away tools, it leaves us with very few options, which may have the unintended consequence of more shootings.
And I just need to be clear, I'm not suggesting any of that. I'm trying to gather information. And this is what we do. We discuss things, we ask questions, we get answers, and that's the process that I'm in. So please, don't feel as though I'm alluding to anything.
No harm taken.
I don't mean to upset. I just need some answers. Thank you.
Sorry, I was not trying to expound being upset. I just want to be sure that we know if we take options away, it limits the tools we do have. So that's all. Thank you.
I understand that. Thank you.
And Councilmember Whelan, that is a question that we hope to be able to make that advice to you in executive session.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay, next.
All right, now, on the next slide, what I want to discuss with you, and this is where our policy really focuses on what is the law in the area of use of force. And so Graham versus Connor is the Supreme Court decision that was made in 1989 that sets forth the factors whereby courts review and determine if every incident of a use of force was what's considered objectively reasonable. Under the Fourth Amendment, if you forward that. So any claim for basically an excessive force claim is really a claim that the officers have violated somebody's Fourth Amendment rights. The Fourth Amendment guarantees us the right to be free from unreasonable searches and seizures. And so use of force is considered a seizure on a person and therefore has to be reasonable under the Fourth Amendment. So if you go forward, so there's three factors that the court set forth. And anytime the court sets forth any sort of test, you know, it's really difficult because you can't be really a bright line rule. And so what the courts have done in the area of constitutional rights is they always balance things. And it's a balance between the, you know, person's Fourth Amendment right to be free from those unreasonable search and seizures versus what is the government interest involved? And so the three factors that the court set up here are the severity of the crime that the officer's dealing with, whether the suspect poses an immediate threat to the safety of the officer or others, and then whether the suspect is actively resisting arrest or attempting to evade arrest by flight. So those are the three factors by which the court looks at every single use of force to determine if it was reasonable under the law. And so in that kind of balancing, you know, what the courts have kind of said is the more severe the crime, then obviously the greater the government interest is in stopping that individual. The more immediate that threat is to the safety of the officer or somebody else, then the higher, you know, the more basically force can be used in a given situation. And obviously, if that person's actively resisting arrest or attempting to evade. So it's not really a bright line rule. It doesn't say if somebody does A, you can only do B. The court has to look at the totality of everything, all of the factors and all of the circumstances and facts that are known at that time to kind of make this assessment. What the court also did when they set forth those three factors, if you go to the next slide, and the court made this statement. And it says, "The calculus of reasonableness must embody allowance for the fact that police officers are often forced to make split-second judgments in circumstances that are tense, uncertain, and rapidly evolving about the amount of force that is necessary in a particular situation." And so what the court has really recognized here is the fact that oftentimes our officers are sent to a situation with very limited information. There's a man here with a machete, all right? And that's a call that we have gotten and we have responded to. And so we get there and we have to figure out what's going on. And, you know, the officers are required to kind of make those judgments with a very small amount of time sometimes. And so the court, you know, recognized this. And if you forward one more time, what the court also set forth is is that the reasonableness of a particular use of force must be judged from the perspective of a reasonable officer on the scene rather than with the 2020 vision of hindsight. So what the court says is those three factors that they set forth are going to be looked at based upon what information that officer had at that moment in time and whether or not a reasonable officer would have done basically what that officer did. And so this is where we kind of, I think, get into a lot of problems and where sometimes I get into a lot of discussions with people, not in law enforcement, when they see a video posted, you know, on social media or in the news about an officer using force. Because maybe it turns out that the person didn't have a gun or didn't have a weapon. But that's something that's learned afterwards. You have, you can only look at and assess the response to that resistance in that moment with what information that officer had. But what the court did here too is set that standard as a reasonable officer standard. If you look at any sort of justification, self-defense laws, our laws here in the state of Arizona or even other states, it's based upon what's called a reasonable person standard. And what that is, is that's an attempt to make things more objective and less subjective. And so it focuses on what a reasonable person would do. And the court in this instance very specifically chose a reasonable officer standard and not a reasonable person standard. And so, and the reason being is because police officers and law enforcement have specialized training and experience that the everyday citizen does not have. And the Supreme Court recognized that when it set forth this standard. So it is a reasonable officer. So the, it is a reasonable officer standard that is used by the court in, in making that evaluation as to whether or not a particular officer's actions were reasonable under the Fourth Amendment. So I know there's a lot of legal stuff there, so if we have any questions about that?
I don't see any questions from council.
Okay. Well, as this is part of our policy, this is actually the standard by which we also review all of our use of forces here within the police department as well. And so we, we look at, you know, those three factors, we look at what information the officers had, and, and making our evaluation determination of whether or not that officer's actions were within our policy, which is what our, and our policy is the law under Graham versus Connor. So, next slide.
We have a question, we have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So this is really helpful and I really enjoyed diving into this a little bit. Obviously, there's an incredible amount of nuance. And I'm particularly appreciative of the distinction that this has to be judged from the perspective of a reasonable officer in the moment and not with 2020 hindsight. I do think that's very important. One of the things that I think has plagued this whole issue for many, many years now is that we're finding out that a lot of times when these things are not video recorded or there aren't, there isn't video available, we hear, we can sometimes hear one story, one testimony from the officers involved and others on the scene. And then when video does surface later and we get an entirely different story, that breaks down the trust that we have in the process. And I don't know of any examples of that happening in Flagstaff recently, but maybe someone can just speak to that. And if it's part of the presentation later, that's fine, too. But what are we doing to make sure that the testimony we receive from other officers on a scene is held in equal account is what other people are saying?
And, and we'll, we'll be addressing how we review these use of forces later in the presentation, if we want to hold off on that. But in, in general, you know, this department has, has been at the forefront of making sure we're transparent. And we developed and have the FPDTransparency.com website. And anytime there is an incident that occurs, we try as soon as possible to post the footage we have of that, basically in order to get out as much information as possible so that people can review that and make the decision for themselves as opposed to, you know, snippets that they see in the press or information that's online. You know, there is, there are always, always different perspectives to incidents that occur. And with our body cameras, it's, it's lent us the ability to, to have somewhat of an objective perspective as long as you can actually see everything. Part of the problem with body worn cameras is that they're worn on the body. And so if you're in a fight, they can get knocked off, they can get, you know, the battery connection disabled, so they're not the be all, end all. And so as with any investigation that takes place by law enforcement, they try and seek out as much information available and corroborate that information as best they can. And, and that happens, you know, in, in every instance and especially in an instance involving an officer that's used deadly force. So, you know, we'll talk a little bit about how we make sure that we review our uses of forces. But in, in general, you know, there's always more information than, than that first video that comes out. And what I tend to do and what I ask people that I know to do is to wait to get all that information before making that determination. And I think unfortunately, people haven't been willing to do that and don't understand the law as it applies to these types of situations and, and make assumptions which results in unfortunately civil unrest, as we have seen recently, and distrust, as you indicated.
I think in some instances, and again, I'm not saying this happens in Flagstaff, but we're learning of things like this. When officers or those on the scene have a chance to sort of compare notes and develop a, a shared narrative before an official interview or investigation, that can complicate things. And again, you may be discussing this later, but I'm interested to hear how we prevent that from happening on our police force.
We, we do have an entirely separate policy, which is our Officer Involved Shooting Policy that, that focuses on those types of investigations. That is not something we were prepared to address in this particular presentation this evening. It's something that we can maybe do at a later date, or if you, if you want to take a look at that policy, we can discuss it. But generally, there, there are efforts made to separate witnesses to make sure that there's no point at which officers can do that sort of collaboration to get a story straight. We do that in our, in our everyday investigations and explain to the officers that, that when they arrive on scene, separate the witnesses, make sure that the witnesses aren't talking to each other. So it's, it's something that is ingrained in investigations in general within this department and specifically also a part of officer involved shooting investigations.
Thank you.
I wanted to just follow up also and just mention that, you know, I really appreciate you pointing that out, Mr. Eslin. You know, I was on council when we decided that it was extremely important that all of our officers have body cams. And this was, I think we were the first police department in all of Arizona to do that. And one of the reasons why, and maybe perhaps at some point the chief can speak to this, I know that Chief Tredway spoke to this, I think, last year when it came to council or maybe the year before. One of the reasons why we were really dogmatic in saying that we need to come up with the money to make sure that all of our officers had cameras, and I think last year we were talking about the new improved cameras and which ones work even better and can hold even more memory, was really to assist with the, the, the conversation at and after the fact, right? Where people would call in and say, "Officer did this." And then the officer was like, "But I didn't do that." And it turned out to be like a he said, she said type of a thing. And so our, the whole idea was if we had a camera, then that would address some of those concerns. And it's my understanding that once the cameras were in place, there was actually less, and people understood that they were being recorded and their behavior was being recorded and the, the totality of the stop was being recorded, there was less of that. And I know that there's been at least three different occasions that myself and Ms. Wieland were contacted by individuals and they told us what had happened in their mind with regard, with regards to their police stop or their officer's stop. When the body camera was pulled and we reviewed it, it gave a different narrative. All right? And so I do think it's important. There was a, there was a video that was released on Facebook that was edited, that showed one side of something, but I do think that people need to wait till they see the totality of it before people respond and say it was something because it very well, very well could not have been what they thought it was or what they were told it was.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, your recollection is correct. We're not naive enough to believe that officers also behave better while they're being recorded. But yes, our complaints went down. It made it easier for our supervisors to investigate complaints. It actually allowed us to see how officers were interaction, interacting with members of our public. And we had to do some retraining for certain people in certain areas. So the benefit was all around. We've got some great training videos that we can show other officers and we actually use those and we train our new officers. And even the state has actually taken some of our footage and put it together for some of their domestic violence training videos. So it's been a great tool all around. It is very expensive, but I think it has saved us and saved, actually been able to show us being more transparent in the community. So, and, and just so you know, our contract is up next year, so we're going to be coming back to council with a budget request for another five-year lease. It's going to be a little pricey, unfortunately.
Well, Mayor, Chief, everybody, thank you for letting me pause there for a moment so we could just reflect on those aspects and things a little bit. That was very helpful.
I just want to make this comment, too, because the chief mentioned the state. I think it's very ironic, quite frankly, that DPS does not necessarily have cameras. I was part of a citizens group that was appointed by, it had to be two or three governors ago to settle the lawsuit that DPS was involved with on I-40 and the issues that they were having. And that particular lawsuit, all DPS officers were supposed to have body cameras as well as cameras that were working in their cars. And that lawsuit was settled with, with that, with that term and has still yet not come to fruition. So I think that that's very interesting. I just wanted to share that. We can go on.
So moving on to the duty to intercede. This is verbatim from our policy, which states, "Any officer present and observing another officer using force that is clearly beyond that which is objectively reasonable under the circumstances shall, when in a position to do so, intercede to prevent the use of unreasonable force. An officer who observes another employee use force that exceeds the degree of force permitted by law should promptly report these observations to supervisor." So this has been a part of our policy for a very long time. With the incident that happened in, in Minneapolis, this is at the forefront kind of of the discussion of that incident because not only was there one officer using force, but, you know, other officers around who may have failed to intercede if, you know, where appropriate. And so this is something that, that we talk about a lot. So one of the things that I do here is obviously a lot of policy work and a lot of training with our officers. And I meet with all our officers who come out of the academy or who lateral in and specifically review this policy with them, our response to resistance policy, as it is that high liability. And this is one of the areas that, that I very, I focus on with them. And there is kind of a, a belief out there that, you know, there's a blue wall, there is, you know, people protecting each other. And we talk about that and talk about how this isn't something that they need, they should look at as, as, you know, protecting one of their own. This can save an officer's career. If, if an officer's having a bad day, they're human, they, they can have a bad day or maybe they're frustrated. You know, if, if somebody, you know, working with them would say, "Hey, you know what? Let me deal with that." And, 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 you know, diffuse that situation and separate that officer, it can prevent that officer from losing their job. And that's kind of how we talk about it in this realm, is that if you look over and you see something that you think's unreasonable, the courts under the Graham versus Connor standards are going to think it's unreasonable, they're going to lose their job, they're going to get fired, they may get sued, they may get charged with a crime. And interceding and preventing all of that from occurring is a very positive thing. And so that's how it's presented to our officers in, in this agency. This response to resistance policy is also reviewed annually with the officers. As part of our, our TASER recertification, we have to go through with them under our TASER, the use of our TASER equipment, it's required. And so we review this policy with them every year as well. And interestingly enough, our certification came up and we were doing this training in May, right when the incident in Minneapolis happened. And so we had discussions about it. It was something that the officers felt was very inappropriate. They, they couldn't believe that it happened, they, they felt bad it happened. All of the civil unrest and things that happened afterwards, you know, something that really impacted our officers because they felt that that was something that would never happen in, in here in our community. And our duty to intercede is, is basically kind of, I, I make sure that they come away with at least two things from this, those three Graham versus Connor factors that they can recite at any given point in time and understanding very clearly what the duty to intercede is on their part. Any questions about that?
I don't see any questions from council at this time.
So moving on, we also have what's called our Use of Force Report Forms. And so these are forms the officers must fill out in addition to their regular police report on certain types of incidents. And so if you move forward through those, it's, if an officer has caused an injury, if an officer has used any less lethal device like baton, pepper spray, or taser, a person complains of any injury or pain regardless of if it's visible, they've been rendered unconscious in any way, they're struck or kicked in any manner, or if they're, the officer threatens to use the taser or firearm. So this is a pretty extensive list of things that officers have to fill the form out for. And in the last couple of years, there was a big discussion, I belong to a statewide association of legal advisors for law enforcement, and there was a significant incident that occurred in the valley in one of their agencies where officers pointed their guns at an African-American family. And after that incident, there were some questions in the legal advising community as, well, you know, do you have your officers report every time they pointed a gun at somebody and every time they point their taser at somebody? And I was one of the few agencies that said, "Yes, yes, we do." And we have been doing that here in Flagstaff for at least the past 20 years, making sure that we are reviewing every time our officers are pointing their firearm or taser at somebody or if they've caused an injury. So anytime one of these things happens, that form has to be filled out. What happens with that form, if you go to the next slide? It's reviewed by the following individuals: the sergeant who supervises the officer, the lieutenant who supervises the squad the officer's on, the deputy chief, myself as the legal advisor, and then our sergeant in professional standards. So what we do is, is independently, I'll look at that. And body cameras have been really helpful in this realm. Before, it was just a written report that we were reading through. But now we can read through the written report and then we can look at the body camera footage. And it, to be honest, gives you a whole different perspective when you're able to see what it is the officer was doing, what it is the person, you know, what type of resistance that person was doing. And so we're looking at those things as we're reviewing these instances to make sure that each time an officer has used force in these circumstances that it was within our policy. Most people don't realize that we do this internal review. And it, as I, as I indicated, it happens on all of those instances listed on the, on that previous slide. And so we're reviewing all of those instances to make sure that our officers are following our policy. So we're not just putting the policy out there and really hoping that they're following it. We are checking and making sure that they're following it. Reviewing these forms also gives us the opportunity to hone in on areas where maybe we're, we're not doing the best job at training. You know, maybe we do have some officers who have, who are, are, you know, having some violations and we're like, well, why is that happening? Where, where are we deficient maybe in our training? Or is it an officer who just repeatedly isn't understanding the policy and, and somebody that we need to, you know, not have, you know, working here anymore? So we're reviewing all of these instances and making sure that those are within our policy. Are there any questions on those slides?
I do not see any.
So moving on, in addition to that review, we also have, under Policy 302, a Use of Force Review Board. And so this type of board can be convened when the use of force by an officer results in very serious injury or death to another individual. The chief of police may also convene the board to investigate any use of force instance that the chief deems it's appropriate. And this board is made up of representatives from each division. So we'll have somebody from patrol, from detectives, and the officer supervisor, a peer officer, a certified peace officer. Usually, what we do is we try and get at least one from each of our neighboring agencies, CCSO, DPS, NEUPD, as well as sometimes our federal partners. We invite them to join us if they can, the instructor for the type of weapon that's used, and then of course, me as the legal advisor is also present on this board. Because the standard that's, that was set forth in Graham versus Connor is a reasonable officer standard, this board is made up of all law enforcement certified officers with the exception of myself, who I still have some extensive training and understanding of the standards involved. And so that board is convened, we have done a board, a Use of Force Review Board for all of the shootings we have had since 2014. a board, a use of force review board for all of the shootings we have had since two thousand and fifteen. Um, and what we do in that board is there's a presentation made. Um, if we go to the next slide, the case is presented and reviewed, um, police reports, videos, whatever it is that the board feels is appropriate that they need to look, they have the authority to make inquiry and request any further investigation, including questioning of the officer if it's deemed appropriate. Um, the purpose of the board is to determine if the actions of the officer with, were within the policy or outside of the policy. But the board does not determine um discipline. The board just makes that determination if it's within or without of the policy. Um, discipline because um that's something that needs to be reviewed in terms of of the legalities of prior instances and things like that, um, which kind of takes a lot more insight um and time. This board, we just focus on whether it's inside the policy or outside the policy. And we also ask the board to look at the policy itself and determine if the policy is best practice, or if there's anything that needs to be modified or clarified within our own policy. Um, so this board, the focus is on, you know, is our policy working, is, did the officer violate the policy or not, and so it's very policy focused. Um, and because our policy includes, you know, the law and the legal standards of Graham versus Connor, then the focus is also on those legal standards as well. And there are questions about that?
I see none.
Okay, so moving on, if we look, so what we thought we would do is also provide you with some statistics, we looked at two thousand and nineteen statistics. So if we look at the, what we call events, so this is our calls for service, um field interviews, traffic stops, arrests. Um, we had one hundred and four thousand six hundred and fifteen events for two thousand and nineteen. Officers used force one hundred times in two thousand and nineteen, and so what we mean by that is they had to fill out that use of force report form um for one hundred of those incidences. And so officers used force in point zero nine five percent of the entire contacts. Um, if you forward that in two thousand and nineteen. Um, so I also went back and just reviewed through those one hundred incidences. Um, out of those, we had one um instances with the use of a taser that was outside of our policy that we determined in our review was not appropriate. Um, that officer was disciplined um and uh received additional training on um the use of the taser to focus and ensure that that officer understood um the policy. Also, in um reviewing those instances, there were twelve use of force instances where, to be honest, the officer probably would have been justified in using deadly force, but didn't um and was able to deescalate. We always kind of see um the big instances where where force is used and and things have happened and somebody's been injured, but we never really get a sense of the fact that instances like this happen every day where an officer doesn't use force. And the main factor that that I looked and saw in these twelve different instances is really that the subject that they were dealing with finally complied, and they complied with their orders. Um, the examples are, there was a man who had a hammer um who was coming at the officers, he was yelling at them to shoot him and that he wanted to die. Um, they tased him instead and they were able to take him into custody. Um, and there was another instance where a man had a machete. Um, and they threatened to tase him and uh he was, he finally dropped that and he was arrested. Um, another instance, officers were called to a man who was waving a hatchet. Um, officers did point their firearms at that individual and he dropped the hatchet and was detained without incident. Um, we had a man who was stabbed and the suspect was located, um, they did point their guns at him, and he was taken into custody without them having to to fire at them. Um, so there are instances that happen like this every day, they're not brought to the forefront because, well, they don't get sensationalized and people don't get hurt, but it's our officers doing their job, deescalating the situations when they can, um, and and basically keeping our community safe. Any questions?
Counsel? I don't see any questions. I see nothing.
All right.
Well, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Okay, Mr. Aslan.
I do have a question, it's it's about data collection and dispersion more generally, I could either ask it here or I could wait for a more appropriate moment.
Let's ask it here because I believe your question was for um Chief Musselman, but you got kicked off um because of the internet, and so why don't we stop here and have you ask that question?
Okay, yeah, thank you, so um Chief Musselman, I know that I recently passed, you've had opportunities to, uh, I've been CC'd on some community emails going back and forth, and there are requests for information that you're just unable to um provide the data collated in the, in the way that they're asking. And uh, I, part of the explanation is, it's just, it's untenable to put in the manpower or the human power to do that. Um, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to that a little bit and, and, you know, there's, there's data such as, we can use examples like um, you know, catch and release data. And also, I'm I'm generally curious about um uh um information, you know, like uh where you have, I think you call them super users. Um, uh, repeat offenders, uh parsing that down into more usable, more specific data segments. Um, while may physically be possible, it's just overwhelming and, you know, so where's the, where's the tension line there, where's the nexus of groups coming to you for a request for information? And your department's ability to actually provide the information in the way that they're asking for it. And Greg, just because I mentioned your name doesn't mean you have to chime in, but uh if you have any comments on this as a city manager, feel free to share them too.
Yes, Mayor and Council, Dan Mussman again. So we have received some requests specifically for site and release data, and we don't capture that. And because every arrest situation is different, some of the requests were to look at site and releasing all shoplifters. It isn't really the crime per se that makes a site and release uh eligible or ineligible, it's the totality of the circumstances, a person may have additional higher charges such as felony possession of dangerous drugs with them, they may also have a warrant, or they may have a history of failing to appear, which you wouldn't know that by focusing on just this one arrest incident, you would have to go investigate the call and then look at the history of the person, or find out if they had a warrant for failure to appear. So in order to gather site and who who all was eligible for site and release that may not have been, we would have to go back and hand read, you know, seven thousand police reports, and then vet out why that officer felt they weren't eligible for site and release, and that could involve looking at several additional police reports, or going back and looking at the body camera video to to see if they were a danger to themselves or other, or had medical consideration, et cetera. That being said, we did, we did just uh get a new records management system, so I think it's going to be easier to search some of the other data we have. Um, speaking specifically about the super user population, we have that data, um, but we're limited in what we can share with whom because it has arrest criminal history data in it. Um, but we could, we can share overall numbers, just not exactly names and charges, if that makes.
Thank you for providing some of those comments, I think it's important to just realize that it gets very complicated very quickly. And uh, just because physical data is sometimes there doesn't mean it's it's readily accessible and it can be time and resource intensive to collect some of that stuff, I think we're all in a mode right now where we're looking for more data and better data and more transparency, and I see that there's a willingness, uh definitely for our police force in the city to be providing that information, but it's fraught with challenges um coming from every level too, and uh, I definitely wouldn't want that to be an excuse for not getting the right information out to the public. Um, you know, these things do complicate the situation um regardless.
Yes, and and Councilmember Aslan, just also from a, a, you know, public records perspective and and a legal perspective, it's not al- always just being able to to turn over information either. Um, because we do have um personal identifying information that's part of police reports, we have to redact those before we can give that information out, so even if it were a situation where others wanted to call through the data, um, you know, police reports and trying to find that, we would still have to go through and and make redactions to reports in order to release any type of information like that.
Okay, we'll move on.
So next up is a discussion on community complaints, and Deputy Chief Walt Miller will be leading this discussion. Next slide, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Deputy Chief Miller here with you, uh, thank you for your time, uh, that you're engaging us on these uh important conversations. I would like to talk about community complaints, we can also call them personnel complaints, and they're also known as citizen complaints that uh we receive here at the police department. Uh, we have it in policy and you'll, you'll see on the uh, on the slide, our policy ten twenty, and I'd just briefly like to uh talk about the purpose and scope of of that policy. Uh, this policy provides us some guidelines for reporting, investigation, and the disposition of the complaints regarding the conduct of the members of the Flagstaff Police Department. Um, I I'd really like to emphasize that we take all of our complaints, all of our citizens' complaints regarding uh the service that we provide and the conduct of our members, we take those very, very seriously. And and we want to hear from our community, we want to hear from our public, we want to hear from our partners. Um, uh, i- i- if if one of our officers is not providing good service, if one of our officers and or employees uh um i- is not providing a good service and or if there is a uh misconduct or a conduct issue, we we want to hear about that. Um, again, personal complaints is any allegation of misconduct or improper job performance. Uh, i- i- it would constitute, that would constitute a violation of apartment policy, federal, state, or local uh law. Uh, uh, personal complaints may be generated internally or by the public. And we we take these complaints in in a variety of several manners. Uh, we take them in writing, I personally receive complaints in writing um on a monthly basis. Uh, we we generate complaints by email, uh, folks can get on a uh email system, and it, uh, the complaints are received by myself, uh, Chief Musselman, and they're also received by uh our lieutenants and our professional standards sergeant, so none of that is going to get lost, uh, we're all gonna, we're all gonna be able to be on the same page and communicate with those. We take those by telephone, um, and and again, I think I mentioned, we take those, we take those online. Uh, when we receive a complaint, they are investigated immediately, and what we like to do is we reach out to the complainant almost immediately, let them know that we are a receipt of their complaint, if it's uh either by by mail or online. Um, we'll reach out to them, let them know that we were a receipt of their complaint, we're looking into it. And i- if I, if I delegate it to a lieutenant or a sergeant, I will let them know who they can be expecting a telephone call from, and that we will thoroughly look into that uh, that complaint, and it goes through the chain of command. Um, we like to get those complaints done within thirty days. Uh, we like to get them investigated and handled and get a disposition within thirty days. Uh, most of the time that is, that is accomplished. Uh, sometimes we're unable to get a hold of a complainant, uh, we're unable to get a hold of witnesses. Uh, there, there could be some lag time due to some communication issues, but for the most part, we strive and and we attain to that thirty days. Um, the complaint data and s- and and our stats are available on our our department's annual report, which is uh, again, published each year, and if you go to the next slide for me, Shannon, you will see uh some of our community complaints, and they're broken down by ethnic origin. Um, a- and then they're also broken down on the disposition of complaints, and let me explain um the disposition of the complaints and give you some definitions on those, on those uh, on those complaints. If we receive a complaint, and then we talked about our body cameras here earlier, and we look at those body cameras and and we, we, I love our body camera program. Uh, it's not the end all be all, a- and you don't always get the full story, but uh just for example, we've received complaints in in the past that an, that an officer stole some of my property. Well, when we looked at the body camera video, the property was was properly put into evidence, or the property wasn't there. We're able to establish based on testimony from our complainant, testimony from the officer, and uh watching the, these videos that uh that complaint uh may be unfounded, and and it was determined to be frivolous, and it it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, there's no merit to it, okay? Uh, there, another disposition is exonerated. Uh, the allegation may have occurred. Um, however, it was within policy, it was in with, i- and it was within procedure, and the officer was found not to be out of policy or or those procedures. Uh, not sustained is when an investigation discloses that there's insufficient evidence to sustain the complaint or fully exonerate the member um o- of the allegation. And a sustained complaint is when the investigation discloses sufficient evidence to establish that the act occurred and that uh the the misconduct or the lack of service uh did occur, and and then we uh, we take uh, we take steps to uh to fix that, to remediate that a- and move forward. Uh, you can see by our uh, our stats that that are on the board right now. Um, we've had thirty, thirty-six unfounded complaints, which which comes up to sixty-four point two uh percent of our complaints are unfounded. Again, largely in due to, I I really honestly believe we do thorough investigations. We do have the checks and balance systems like we've already talked about. It starts with the supervisor, it goes to a lieutenant, i- it goes to to myself, uh, goes to Chief Musselman, and I also get uh, I also get a lot of input from our professional standards office and from, from our legal advisor, Mary Ann Sullivan, when we look at these things. Uh, again, we take, we take each complaint extremely serious. Uh, we we want to make sure that we're building those partnerships with our community, and I believe, a- and we touched on the community trust, and we want to hear from our community, we want to uh assure that the level of service is uh, is appropriate and and um that are, there are, obviously our conduct i- is always appropriate. Um, and if we go to the next slide, and and this will be the last slide on my presentation, this has to do with uh racial complaints, complaints by race. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, you can, we broke it down, fifty-seven total complaints followed by fifty-eight, forty-seven, seventy and fifty-eight going back to two thousand and fifteen. Um, the total racial discrimination complaints, seven, three, 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 and four, we are not, and none of them were sustained. We are not getting a lot of complaints, um, this is an officer racially profiled me. I can tell you, in the past, we have received um these complaints, and I I will give you a brief example. The officer pulled me over because of my race. We look into it, uh, the officer actually pulled the vehicle over because of the driving behavior, because of the uh, the violation that was observed. When we look at body camera footage, uh, the officer was behind the vehicle at the time of the violation, windows are tinted, there's no way that the officer could have known the race of the driver and or the gender, whether it was male or female. the race of the driver and/or the gender, whether it was male or female of the driver. And I think that the perspective of some folks was that I was pulled over because of my race, and we have found, and that's just one example, we have found that that is not completely the case. With that, I went through that kind of quick. Any questions on those three quick slides?
Mr. Rodigard.
Yeah, thank you, Sergeant, for that presentation. How do you handle a situation where you might receive a complaint, but there might be a language barrier? How does that work as kind of a exercise?
Sure, absolutely. Anytime we have a complaint, and/or a citizen's making a report where we do feel we have a language barrier, we pay for a service called the Language Line, and we can simply call the Language Line and put them in touch with the complainant, and they're like a third party, and they will translate for us. And/or, we have our Citizens Liaison Committee, and we encourage our Citizens Liaison Committee to bring those complaints forward to us as well. We have, and I'll just take Spanish speaking, you know, for an example, we have a Spanish speaker, in fact, we might even have two on our committee, that will, that would be more than happy to translate for us if we get in that situation where we could, you know, if we wanted to do it in person as well, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the conversation on this topic, Sergeant. So are we doing, I heard you say that the Citizen Liaison Committee or group is also taking in complaints. What other outreach are we doing to receive complaints from the community?
Facebook, social media. Unfortunately, one of our complaints several years ago appeared on Facebook, nobody called us. One of our employees actually saw the post on Facebook, called with the administration, we launched an internal investigation that unfortunately resulted in a termination of employee. So the social media is huge. We will take a complaint anonymously. If somebody wants to call in anonymous, we will take those complaints as well and look at those thoroughly. Now, it's hard to give a good disposition there when we don't have a complainant. However, I still want to hear those things, and I want to look into those things and make sure, again, that we're providing the service and the conduct that our community deserves. And we also receive complaints from you all, and from our partners in city leadership and our partners over at City Hall. If there is a constituent of yours that has a concern, you give us a call, you shoot us an email, and we will, we certainly look into it, and we will either call them back, or we will go through you if they don't want to particularly talk to us, and you all want to be the go-between, we have no problem with that, too. Again, it goes back to the public trust, and it goes back to the transparency. I've been here going on 25 years, and this is one area that I can guarantee you that we don't, that we don't slough on, if, for lack of better words, I know there's a better word, but we don't, we take these very seriously.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any more questions? I do not see anymore.
If we can go to the next slide, please. My name is, good evening, Councilman Mayor, my name is Ryan Turley, I'm the Hiring Sergeant for the Flagstaff Police Department. I'm happy tonight to take a few minutes of your time and explain the hiring process that I conduct for potential applicants to our department. Before I begin the actual hiring process of an applicant, the applicants must meet state minimum requirements, which is set by Arizona Post. Arizona Post is the Arizona Police Officer Standards and Training Board. AZ Post is the state agency which certifies all law enforcement officers. And then the officers go through a thorough background process. It's my experience that about one out of every 17 candidates make it through the entire hiring process and are actually hired as a police officer for our agency, because this is a strict and very in-depth process. We go to the next slide, please. I'm going to set out the minimum requirements for you guys, for you, excuse me, counsel, to be a police officer. You have to be 21 years old, need to have a high school diploma or a GED, need to pass a medical test by an approved Arizona Post certified doctor. You can never have been convicted of a felony crime, you cannot be disarmingly discharged from the military, you can never been previously denied police officer certification within the state of Arizona, you can never have sold marijuana or other drugs, you cannot have used marijuana more than 25 times in your entire life, and you cannot have used marijuana within the last three years, even if it was one time. You cannot have used dangerous or narcotic drugs more than five times in your total life, and you cannot have used any of these drugs within the last seven years. You have to take a polygraph test, which is better known as a lie detector test, and you have to have a good clean driving record for the past three years. Next slide, please. If the applicant meets these requirements, they next have to take a written test. During this written test, the applicant is graded on their ability to read, write, and comprehend. Furthermore, the test rates the applicant's skills on critical thinking, communication, ethics, teamwork, and community relations. If the applicant passes the written test, he or she is invited to the physical test. They must complete a minimum number of push-ups, sit-ups, in a mile and a half run in a certain amount of time. Now, if they pass the physical test, they're invited to attend the interview. In this job interview, the applicant is asked a series of questions and scenarios, which are designed to elicit the applicant's ethical standards, their ability to apply compassion, community policing, problem-solving skills, racial profiling potential, and decision-making abilities. If they pass this interview, they're moved on to the background investigation. In the investigation, I meet with the applicant and ask them about 210 questions regarding their past. These questions go in depth into their personal lives and history. Questions are asked about previous employment, every single interaction they've had with a law enforcement agency, past marital relationships, how the applicant disciplines their children, their drug use, their alcohol use, undetected criminal behavior, their finances, to include any debt they have, any accounts going into collections or repossessed, employment history, and much more. If they pass the background interview, they're signed up for a polygraph test. Before they, before they take the test, they have to answer an additional 141 questions regarding their past. These answers are compared to the answers they gave me in the background interview to ensure consistency and integrity. An outside organization completes the polygraph test, which usually takes between one and two hours to complete. If the applicant passes the polygraph text, excuse me, the polygraph, the next test they take is psychological examination, which is administered by a licensed psychologist. The examination is designed to screen out applicants who may have psychological, cognitive, or emotional issues. This is conducted by answering at least 338 questions and going through an interview with a psychologist. Now, if the applicant passes the psychological test, they will go to a medical test, where they meet an Arizona Post licensed physician, who makes sure they can medically and physically do the job. Now, while this is all going on, I'm doing a variety of functions. I run a criminal history on the applicant to see if they've ever been arrested or cited by any police agency in the United States. I contact every police department, county sheriff's office, and state police, where the applicant has lived, to see if there's been any police reports, any law enforcement contacts, and verify that they haven't been arrested or don't meet our standards. If the applicant has applied for a different police agency, I contact that agency to see what happened during the hiring process, to see if there are any red flags that came out during that process, such as failing their background or failing the polygraph test. I then run their credit history to see if there's any outstanding overdue debts, and see if there's any financial decision-making trust in to see what their financial decision-making process is. I contact their former employers to see if the applicant has any discipline issues or work performance issues. I contact their personal references to ask a series of questions of what kind of the person the applicant is. I check their driving record to see if they have any excess of moving violations within the past three years. I then check their social media to see their, to check out their posts or photographs, to see if they go against our mission statement, or rewrote our public trust with the city. If the applicant passes all of this, this information is sent over to Arizona Post, who conducts an internal audit. They do this to ensure that they meet the minimum standards and the integrity standards to become a police officer. If they pass this audit, by AZ Post, they will attend a police academy, which is between 18 and 20 weeks, and it consists of very stringent studies over various criminal justice topics, including ethics, racial biases, and racial profiling. If they pass this academy, they, that, then they will become a certified officer in Arizona. Now, I would like to provide you a couple examples of applicants who are disqualified through this process. One applicant was a prior Department of Corrections officer from Nevada. He told me that he was terminated from that position because he just didn't fit in. However, during my investigation, I found out that he was fired because he used, he had nine use-of-force violations in a six-month career there. So of course, he wasn't hired here, that's not what we're looking for. Another applicant admitted to severely disciplining his child with the use of hot sauce in his mouth, and also prior thefts at work. Another applicant admitted to lying on a mortgage application and basically defrauding a bank to get his assets so he can get approved for a loan. And also, he mentioned he had slept with a prostitute. Of course, these applicants were not hired. In closing, I want to say I enjoy my current position, and I take on the responsibility of hiring new police officers with great pride. I would like to say my ultimate goal in this position is to hire the next chief of police, and not the next scandal that will lead to the termination of my current chief of police. And with that, I thank you very much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Ms. Whelan.
Thank you very much for your presentation and very thorough questioning and that. I'm just pondering, you know, one of the things, or the thing, that got us even in this conversation is Black Lives Matter. So the whole idea of racial bias, institutional whiteness, all of those factors that, as a white woman, have snuck up on me, and I'm finally realizing what this privilege is and what I didn't know about. So how do you get to that with your applicants? How do you assess racial bias, or institutional, what, ignorance around racial, gender, but especially racial issues that most of us were never told about, and we're just finally coming to grips with?
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. There are plenty of examples that I can tell you what we do. One, we ask a question, we give the applicant the definition of what racial profiling is. This is done during our initial job interview process. We tell them what the definition of racial profiling, and we flat-out ask them, do you believe that racial profiling is a valid law enforcement tool? And if they say yes, they're absolutely not hired here, because it is unconstitutional, it has no place, it's unethical, has no place in any police department, and it's not going to happen on my watch in this police department. Other spots, we ask so many times, so when I'm asking personal references, when I'm asking personal references, I'm asking, have you seen any behavior that would be considered, are they prejudiced, or are they biased? And we go from there. Other questions are, the psychological tests, they're designed to elicit these answers. These are very good psychologists from the University of Minnesota that came up with this test, and has standard throughout most law enforcement agencies and fire departments in the country. But it's used to design to bring out these, you know, implicit biases from somebody, so we're finding this out. We ask the question several times in my 220 questions that I answer, have you ever committed a hate crime? Have you ever, would you have a problem working with a member of the opposite race, sex, sexual orientation? All these questions are asked through the polygraph test, it's brought up in the polygraph test, and it's also checked by the polygrapher who administers the test. I can go on and on and on. Our social media scrubbing, when we're going, not scrubbing, when we're investigating social media, I'm looking for, is there a Confederate flag in the background? Is there a swastika, is there something overtly that's going to hurt our public trust and her community by hiring those guys? Not going to happen.
Understand. So, you know, as you were talking, and I appreciate what you said, but I know that in the educational field, we also found bias in our testing. So those individuals who lived in an urban setting did well in standardized testing, but those individuals that maybe were in an extremely rural setting had lack of ability to experience, you know, cultural differences just by where they lived, were challenged by the questions that were asked. So I'm going to kind of flip the question and say, have you considered that the test itself would limit maybe certain diverse groups or underrepresented groups in becoming a police officer, or gender issues?
No, ma'am, I'll take anyone that can pass all these tests. Every single test that I read to you is designed for people to pass. We're finding out who this individual is during these tests. It's not set up to fail anybody, absolutely not. We're trying to find out who applicant A is as a person. Like when we, for an example, when we do a, our interview process, I don't want some BS answer that's regurgitated from YouTube when someone learned how to take a police interview exam, I want to know who the person is. We want to know how, what their heart is, are they compassionate, are they going to fit in with our community? That's my goal to hire people. With standardized tests, there's one standardized test that we're taking for, after, I guess it would be two total, with the written test they began with, and then the psychological test. That's all supplemented by an interview with the trained psychologist.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for this, the presentation on your practices here in hiring. You know, it just makes me think of Councilmember McCarthy's concerns that he had brought forward a while back in regards to a potential officer who had done harm in a different community, coming to our community and working for us, and vice versa. So I'm glad to hear the extent of which you investigate someone's background and that individual and their character. My question is, you know, what do we do a year in, or five years in? You know, what kind of follow-up testing are we doing? Because it's one thing to, you know, be a good person, you know, in a snapshot moment, but, you know, on the front lines of the work that you all do, I can imagine you get somewhat calloused, and you might create some judgments, or some judgments might formulate. What do you do to ensure that that officer's mental well-being and balance is maintained? And that might even be a question for chief, but yeah, let me know your thoughts.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, it's Chief, or interim Chief Musselman, again, I'll take this, this one. That is the sole reason we embarked on getting that red flag warning system, is because we wanted to be able to track those trends and reach out and save those officers before they made a fatal mistake, or a mistake that our community would never recover from. So it tracks citizen complaints, it tracks use of force, tracks all those things. And then we've also done other stuff on the front end. Council, within the last month, approved a grant for officer wellness. And it doesn't just include, you know, workout and going to the gym, it includes financial wellness. So you don't work yourself to death and take out too many mortgages by buying too many toys. It includes yoga for first responders, so that we can attract healthier people and open it up to all of our employees. and open it up to all of our employees, not just those that want to go to a gym and pump iron all day. So we've got a lot of different things going. We've got a CISM team that services our internal people where they can meet with a counselor during work hours off-site and no one knows about them meeting with this counselor other than the officer and the counselor. So we have a lot of things in the work as a safety net to help catch those people. And then the other things like Deputy Chief Miller talked about is the complaints. You know, if we get a complaint on an officer that says, you know, he was just really rude to me. And so we start pulling different cameras and we find out that this officer is only rude to females. Well, now we've got a problem and we can go back and look at previous complaints and see if there's a trend. Is he, does he give everyone a ticket for running a red light or only Hispanic females? And we can start narrowing it down there and then we can take active action to either move him out of the force or get him or her corrected. I hope I answered your question.
You did, Chief. Thank you so much for that. And and one follow-up, um, you know, I I know Virginia Wada Hamaji in our community does a lot of trauma training and 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 work to to help folks with their trauma. And I think, you know, today in our community, there's a lot of trauma. I mean, and even before COVID in this year, there was a lot of trauma um, a- a- at all levels of our, just, you know, people, citizens. Um, are we addressing the trauma that officers face? And I know, you know, it can be tough because of the culture of being part of a team of police, but what are we doing about trauma?
It it is tough. And so if you're involved in a critical incident, we make you go get screened before you can come back to work. But the culture is changing and we've got officers looking out for each other. And I I always tell the story about one officer that was talking to another officer and could tell he was feeling down and and having, you know, not quite suicidal thoughts, but pretty close. And this officer says, well, I'm leaving Phoenix right now, my day off to go talk to the chief. So you better make it to the chief's office before I get there. And that officer did come in and talk to the chief and we got him back on the right path. So uh, much of this is part of this mental health first aid where we're just more aware of it and we're talking about it more. But there there still is some stigma there for some of the old traditionalists in police work, but I I think you see a lot of that and a lot of profession, but we are combating that as best we can.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
I want to ask, um, I guess I have a comment and I want to ask a question. I'll ask the question first. Um, who's, what's the name of the officer who's presenting right now?
Uh, Sergeant Ryan Turley, our professional standards internal affairs sergeant.
Okay, officer, Officer Stur- Turley, is that what it is?
Yes, ma'am.
Truly. Um, so I just want to circle back to what Ms. Whelan said and make sure that I understand what you said. So basically, you're looking at the totality of all of this. So for example, it's possible that they could not do so well on the standardized test. Um, or they could have done really well on the standardized test. But then you get to another point in the interview where the the answers aren't matching up to what they said on the standardized test or um, they're completely different. And so you're looking at the totality of everything. Is that, is that what you're trying to say?
Uh, Madam Mayor, it's no simple answer to that. So I would say yes and no. There are certain things that you can have done in your past that automatically disqualify you. You know, what I mentioned earlier for the minimum qualifications, there's policies on steroid use, Adderall, R- Renalin, and we can go on. And if you meet one of those, that's an automatic DQ with it. Now, with the totality of circumstances, there can, yes, I, there's another part of that. Yes, absolutely. Is it, uh, we had someone that smoked marijuana, they the up to the max amount of times. So let's say they did it twenty-five times and uh, it was, it meets the minimum qualification, was three years ago, but he did it in one month. We were like, okay, he meets the qualifications. We, we don't know how that looks. We want to go further into that particular individual, see what kind of life has he done? What has he done after the, that one month of smoking pot? Has he gotten a job? Has he been a productive member of society? So we look at total of things, not just, again, uh, standardized tests unless it's to one of those specific rules that Arizona Post has. I'm becoming a police officer, ma'am. And I hope I didn't confuse you anymore.
You didn't. So it's not possible for them to fail one part of the test and still become a police officer?
Uh, you can, I think it's highly unlikely, but uh, but you can always get retested. Maybe one psychologist gave, had an opinion on their interview with you and the applicant wanted another one. They take, yes, once in a while in a polygraph or polygrapher that we generally use can't get a good reading. So we'd send it to another polygrapher down in Phoenix for it. So I guess, yes. And our physical. That's all the time. We get people that fail to run all the time. Sorry, ma'am, go ahead.
So they couldn't just decide that, oh, I don't like the, I don't like the test that I had and go get another one? There has to be a legitimate reason to why they're getting a different test.
Correct. Uh, and it's through the company that we set up for. So they can't just go get their own psychological MMPI test. And it's our decision whether they're retested or not, ma'am.
Okay. And I guess my comment, my comment was, I don't know how many of us would be employed if we had to go through that, that level of testing. I just felt like I just need to verbalize that. You know, we just hired, for example, and put our city manager on the spot. And I'm sure that we did, you know, testing, but we didn't do anything like that. And I know we as council members don't go through that in order to be um, seated. I just, I I wonder if there's any, and I want to be clear, I think the level of testing is absolutely required. Because at the end of the day, you know, the officers do have, um, they do have the ability to take a life. And they have the ability to um, hurt individuals and quite frankly, arrest individuals. So I want to be clear when I say that. I I think the level of scrutiny that goes into hiring officers is definitely justified. I just look at that and I think to myself, none of the rest of us, with the exception of, I guess, some of the people who were in the military or who served that way, went through any level of vetting or um, this type of job interview. Um, and so I just want to make sure I I state that because I was absolutely amazed when I heard that. I also think that um, that what the Vice Mayor said is is critical. Because I do think that um, being in such a position where you see the the good and you see the bad. And with officers, with police officers, what I have noticed is that, and I don't mean to put fire on the spot either because I love, I love fire, but normally fire is rescuing people. And so I think that they have a different um, a different per, uh, a different, I think people look at them differently, right? You you see police officers rescuing people, but you also see police officers arresting people and other things, right? And so I think they have a different, um, I think people look at them somewhat differently. And so I think that they see a lot of the worst in humanity and they see a lot of the best in humanity. And I do think that making sure that our officers, you know, six months in, a year in, five years in, making sure that we are supporting their mental health um, and helping to see if they're to the point of burnout or maybe they saw one bad thing too many and now, you know, their psychological test might have changed. Um, I do think that there is, I I think we need to have a serious conversation about how we make sure that our officers have the emotional support that they need. So I'll just leave it at that. Counsel? I don't see anything else.
This is interim Chief Musselman again. If you, I just have a closing si- slide.
We do have a comment um, from the Vice Mayor.
I apologize. Um, but I just wanted to add one last follow-up. Mayor, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Vice Mayor?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, I.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move forward, Chief.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Oh, we, we do have um, public comments.
Mayor?
We can all hear you. Maybe the mayor can't hear you.
Chief, are you there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mayor, can you hear me? It sounds like folks can hear me, but the mayor can't.
Hello?
Mayor, testing?
Okay, I can hear you now.
Mayor, can you hear me? I can hear you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I apologize. So Vice Mayor, I apologize. I could not hear anything.
That's okay. Um, so just a quick, quick follow-up comment to to the conversation on this topic. I think it's a really good conversation and I would like just to have us take a deeper dive at some point. Maybe not tonight, but I just have one last question um, on this topic. And it's in regards to that, you know, diversity, because I think at the end of the day, you can be as, you know, open-minded as as you really you you want to be, but you know, when it's all said and done, you kind of, I believe, resort back to your cultural foundational being, you know, and 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 where you come from as as an, as a person and and your family and your ties and and your roots and and what you connect to at a very fundamental level. And so my question is, you know, what can we do to to really build upon the diversity of our police force here in town? You know, as the mayor said, you know, there's pros and cons to having such a intensive um, hiring prac pro- uh, process, which I do appreciate, but if it is keeping certain people out, you know, I I remember a conversation I think we had with uh, Chief Treadway and and Musselman in the past in regards to like, I believe it was like Native Americans who were applying for the job and just falling short. What can we do to to better the diversity of our, of our Flagstaff Police Department family?
Chief, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, for the question. We've uh, you know, we've stretched ourselves far and wide. We did radio ads on the reservation to try and spur interest there uh, for two to three years with absolutely zero candidates coming to us that way. And so that's when we kind of turned our focus inward and tried to hit um, the high schools and did the high school career days. And we had much, uh, it was a pretty diverse class, so it seemed pretty promising. And we seem to be doing a little better as of late. And now that I said that, one of our female officers is leaving to go to Prescott, but to be closer to uh, family. But it it's just a constant battle. Um, we look for where we can on social media. We've reached out of state. We test nationally. We make it super easy to test. And it's going to be even harder with the current protests going on. Recently, we took out ads in the Navajo Times and the National Minority Update as well to try and spur more interest. But I don't, I don't have the answers, Vice Mayor. I wish I did. I wish I could tell you everything would be better um, in a year, but it's just a constant battle to keep working towards diversity.
Okay, I appreciate that. I know that was a very challenging question, so I appreciate you taking a attempting to address it. I appreciate it. I appreciate the efforts you mentioned.
I wanted to just jump in real quick and also mention, I think that there are other things that we can do to really help. Um, we used to do them. You know, we used to have a US Department of Justice um, grant here in the city. We had two, almost three weed-in-seat sites. And the officers were um, allowed to do other things besides just respond to calls. I think right now because of budget restraints, um, you know, most of the capacity is going to return, is going to responding to calls. But officers used to be more ingrained in in um, integrated in our communities. They used to do stuff like, you know, um, go to fiestas. They used to have bicycle rallies with the kiddos. They used to pick apples off the trees and do apple greening plants. They used to plant, um, what do you call it? Community gardens. They used to be able to go to Storytime um, with the kiddos, either in the park or at school. They used to be more ingrained with the um, overall fab- fabric of our community. And it wasn't just when something was a major issue that you saw a police officer. So there are other models um, that were used here in Flagstaff. The weed-in-seat site, um, the one in Sunnyside was the top weed-in-seat site for the last two years. Um, it was in existence out of three hundred and seventy-eight such sites in the United States. Um, and you know, in talking with our con- our congressional delegation, um, there is the sense that once they deal with COVID and that issue, they are going to start looking at, they're going to start looking at criminal justice reform and what some of these other programs that used to exist did and how those programs might be able to be brought back to life. So I would just really encourage um, um, the city of Flagstaff and our council members to like, either do some Googling or I can send some um, links. But there were those other programs in which officers were more integrated with the day-to-day lives in communities. And then they were able to actually grow officers out of those communities, right? Because the kids saw officers and they understood the rigorous um, stress testing that you're going to have to go through to become an officer. So when it came down to making some of these life choices, they chose not to do certain things that their friends were doing. So I just want to um, put that out there because I think that that's important to understand.
Mayor, if I can jump in really quick and just add, you know, I I really appreciate you bringing that up because that's where my mind was going with all this as well. And going back to some of the more basic things that our police department used to do. You know, I I know that our police department currently does uh, basketball games with kids through the Boys and Girls Club. And I and I love that and I can't wait to get out there and play with our officers and our kids one of these days, but those types of things um, I think really go a long way. And as we do potentially change our model of responding to nine-one-one calls, uh, there is a large opportunity for a large cost-saving in that effort. And I just wanted to plant a seed and say, you know, if we do implement some of these ideas and 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 do see some real cost savings, maybe we could invest more in those types of things. Thank you.
All right, I want to make sure that I'm clear too, that the officers were being paid. It was part of their role to do that, right? So I think what we have going on right now is you have officers that are doing their job and then they're volunteering additionally above and beyond, right? And I really appreciate that. But I also say that part of their profession is being peace officers and they should be able to be paid while they're out there doing that as well. So I just want to make sure that that out there. Okay. Um, Mr. Odegaard, followed by Ms. Solis?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh, Chief Musselman. Concerning, um, you know, the struggle um, finding officers at times, you said the the high school uh, has shown a promise. You know, concerning the police aides, I know usually I was told they're on a track of going into law enforcement. So are the police aides, can they be hired at eighteen to twenty years old? With the thought process, when they turn twenty-one, they'll go into law enforcement?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, that's, that was exactly the reason we explored the police, well, one of the main reasons we explored them. And so currently, we have three police aides. One just got offered a job in Nevada. So he finished up his schooling here at NAU and wanted to move home to be closer to family. So he'll be leaving. The other two have already talked with Sergeant Turley about um, getting their paperwork squared away so that once they turn twenty-one, they can test. And then we'll reach out and try and hire another three rounds of police aides to fill those spots.
Yeah, and thank you. And yeah, it's 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 unfortunate, you know, that we only have three positions for the the police aides, um, you know, especially with uh, budget concerns as we are in a COVID and maybe at some point in the future, you know, that could be expanded and then, you know, have a little more pull, a pool, I should say, of officers that might, you know, transition to the department. Especially, you know, you know, our best bet is, you know, with our, a local kid population that has the desire to go into law enforcement at some point in their, in the future. So thank you for that comment.
Ms. Solis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I just share. So I showed you a sticker on my phone that says, "We support our local enforcement." That same sticker was in my car, which eventually attracted vandalism and damage to my car. But that means I will only support our law enforcement officers, especially our Flagstaff. our law enforcement officers, especially our Flagstaff Police Department officers, stronger than ever. The discussion about hiring and, and retaining our officers is also a workforce development priority within the county. And I think that was, that was the, the reason why we had those stickers and posters released a while back is how to attract, hire and retain our, our law enforcement officers within Northern Arizona. Because they go through this rigorous, rigorous, rigorous recruitment process and training. And then we, they serve our community for about two years. And then they move to other communities to serve. So workforce development for our, our law enforcement officers not only talks about giving them training and, and competitive salary and benefits, but also support, you know, moral support that the mayor has articulated earlier, and, and housing. So but of course, I know law enforcement is, transcends any career choice. It's, it's a vocation. It's a calling. So I do send my, my gratitude and appreciation for every member of our Flagstaff Police Department force.
Thank you. Can we have our public input, please?
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks.
And you're on?
Hi, my name is Audrey Cruz. It's nice to speak with you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. I'm a concerned citizen of this city, and I previously asked you to examine the city's police practices and reform some of its policies and budget in a citizens petition you all discussed earlier this summer. And today, I've been listening to the presentation and I have some additional questions that I'm wondering if you would be willing to ask our deputy police chief, Musselman, or the others who are there, either in this presentation or as follow-up. But I, my first question is, are the trainings that are outlined on Slides 13 through 14 making measurable impacts to the police officers' behaviors? And if so, what are those behavior changes and how are they being measured? Additionally, given that Native American folks account for 36% of arrests in 2019, but make up 8.6% of the Flagstaff's population, why aren't there more Indigenous-focused cultural competency trainings among this list? And I am also curious budget-relatedly, what percent of the budget is spent on de-escalation trainings and de-escalation practices that one of the presenters mentioned? And mentorship of new officers compared to the budget spent on training officers and the use of force, tasers, guns, and the carotid control holds among those other things discussed? I also had a question about, Slide 6 says that the arrest numbers are not part of performance metrics for the police. But I'm curious, what are the performance metrics? And how many of them are based on some of the positive community engagement moments like the mayor and vice mayor were just discussing? And additionally, things like if a police officer gives an intoxicated person a ride home or gets an unsheltered person to a shelter on a cold night, are these kinds of things part of the officer's record and evaluation of performance? And y'all have been discussing complaints at length. And I wonder, is the complaint process made transparent to any person who's arrested or issued a warrant at the time of their arresting or issuing a warrant? Are they aware that that's a possibility, or do they have to find that on their own? And then lastly, what proposals do the police chief, the police officers, and the Citizens Liaison Committee have for reforming the police policies and budget? It'd be great to hear what they see as possibilities in the future. Thank you so much for asking these important questions and the discussions you've been having tonight and your courageous questions of our police department and of ourselves. Thank you very much.
Chief, were you able to answer those questions?
That's a tall order, but we can take a stab at some of them.
Well, perhaps you can answer the questions that you have the ability to now, and then we can have a follow-up from you with the other ones?
Sure, sure. We can start there. So let me start at the bottom. The last one, the last question asked was about the Citizens Liaison Committee. In our last two meetings, they are very much interested in the alternate response to calls, quite in line with, you know, some of the direction, exploratory direction that our city council is giving as well. So they're really excited to see that move forward and willing to be a part of that. As far as, no, we don't tell every person we're arresting that they have a right to file a complaint. That's on our website. It's elsewhere. If somebody tells the officer, "I want to file a complaint," the officer will contact their supervisor to take that complaint. Arrest numbers are not part of our performance metrics. You don't get an above standard if you have 15 arrests, a standard if you have 10, and a below standard if you have five. Our performance evaluations are similar to those at the, at the city where we look at competencies such as teamwork, accountability, communication quality, responding to calls for service, interviewing witnesses, report writing, investigation and follow-up, public relations, are you involved in promoting a positive image for the police department? Block watch, community support programs, crime prevention, problem solving, compliance with training, properly preparing and giving courtroom testimony, follow-up investigation. There is one for physical conditioning and grooming, dress, driving, safety care, effectiveness under stress, work attitude, maintaining proper work schedule. Those are some of our metrics. There was a question asked about our training budget, and I think this, earlier I told you our training budget was $45,000 for this last year. To bring that implicit bias training to the police department, it cost us somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000 to $25,000. But de-escalation is woven through all of our trainings, our TASER training, our use of force, even our firearms. The blessing there is most of those trainings, use of force, fire, those are done with in-house people. So those usually don't cost us a whole lot to put on. Therefore, that's the reason less money's spent on them. And then there was a question about the arrest rate of Native American people account for 36% of arrests. And there was a percentage given from the census. My understanding, the census information on the city website is that 12%, according to the 2010 census, which again is 10 years old. And we have a very transient community, so we have people moving in and out. And if 75% of every Navajo dollar is spent in our community and every other social safety, or every other social agency is seeing higher percentages, I believe that's why we're seeing those higher percentages as well. There's a question about trainings that have measurable impacts on officers' behaviors. You know, your police department has always been a learning organization. We didn't just start training these last three, we've always provided top-notch training to our officers to make them better officers. We want them to be well-versed in the best practices of policing. That's why we started Crisis Intervention several years ago after seeing that model. That's why we received, put in a procurement to get tasers, because we saw the value in tasers. Tasers were actually saving officers and suspects from getting injured because you didn't have to physically fight with people. So we have done that kind of training all throughout our careers here. There was a question about them being, how you can measure that. I would say, we're not getting the founded complaints. We're not getting the civil litigation. I think those are where the proof is in the pudding. Otherwise, we'd be getting more of those complaints. We'd be having these incidences blowing up in social media, and our city would be a war zone. But I think it's also, public trust is very delicate. It's like climbing a very steep mountain, and you climb it inch by inch through forging relationships and partners and doing the good things that the officers and community members do. Showing up when you're called on, doing a good investigation, even if it's a, you know, seemingly minor call for service and making, making those connections. So I think I answered them. I may have missed one though, or two.
Well, I would ask the speaker if she could email those questions into city, city council to the city manager. And we can go over and see if there's any questions that you weren't able to answer on the spot. There was a comment made about warrants. I just want to make sure that I'm correct in saying that the Flagstaff Police Department doesn't issue warrants.
That is correct. Warrants are issued from the city court.
Okay, the city and the county courts?
Yeah, any of the courts can issue. Superior Justice City Courts.
Okay. Great. Counsel, any more questions? Okay, our next public speaker?
Hello?
Hi, Brian. This is the city council meeting. You are ready to speak for public comment. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Brian Guest, and I am the Director of Northern Arizona Crisis Services for Tarot Health. I just wanted to make sure people are aware of our services that are being provided in the community already for helping law enforcement in addressing people who are having a mental health crisis. So we already work very closely with law enforcement to, to, you know, to take over and help them in situations where the, call it the 911, really turns out to be more of a, a mental health issue than a criminal or danger issue. So we have those services existing in the area now, and I just wanted to make sure that people are aware of that.
Well, thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any comments or any questions for our speaker? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And Brian, thank you so much for being with us tonight and submitting a public comment to us. Brian, can you talk a little bit about what is being done, I believe, in Phoenix in terms of the 911 dispatching? And also a little bit about your funding source? I think, I think what we're talking about very much goes to what Councilor Whelan was mentioning earlier in the conversation.
Yeah, yeah. So Tarot Health is an organization that operates throughout a lot of the state. And in, in Phoenix, in Maricopa County, we do the same mobile crisis services that are done here in Northern Arizona as well. The Phoenix Police Department and Mesa Police Department have both implemented protocols where a caller who calls 911 can be routed by 911 operator. And if it's determined that it, it really is a mental health and not a safety or criminal issue, that caller can actually be transferred directly to the crisis line, the Maricopa County Crisis Line, which is a crisis line that's funded by the state. It's not, it's not run by Tarot. It's run by another organization called Crisis Response Network. But we work very closely with them. And so these calls are being diverted to the crisis line where a mental health, you know, professional can help sort of triage and de-escalate the situation as best as they can over the phone. And then if they're not able to, to do that effectively over the phone, then they can dispatch a mobile team such as Tarot to go and see the person face-to-face, in person, to try to, again, de-escalate and hopefully keep the person where they are and get them in a better state so that they are on a, on a better path. So that's something that's already being done in Mesa and Phoenix. And so I know there's been discussions of, of whether we can implement something similar in Northern Arizona communities, including Flagstaff, and I think that's a definite possibility. As far as funding, our crisis services, our local crisis services are funded by Health Choice Arizona, the Regional Behavioral Health Authority. And they get the funding from the state. So essentially, state funds that trickle down through the Regional Behavioral Health Authority. And then the Regional Behavioral Health Authority gives those funds to us to provide mobile crisis services. They also fund the crisis hotline. And they also fund the Guidance Center's crisis stabilization as well. So it's all state-funded and through the Medicaid program, but it's not, in the case of crisis services, it's available to anyone regardless of insurance or not. So even though it's through the Medicaid access program, it's not only for access individuals. It's for everybody.
Great. Thank you so much, Brian.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are there any more comments or questions for Brian? Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Brian, for speaking this evening on this topic. You said Mesa and another community, you know, are looking at ways concerning how there could be more of a robust social service response. Like Mesa, for example, is the funding still coming from the state, or is the city providing some funding for that?
I, since I'm not directly involved, I can't answer definitively on that. But, but the state is still providing the overall crisis response, funding for the overall crisis response. I do believe that Mesa PD, for example, or Mesa, the City of Mesa, I'm not sure which, also contributes some funding towards that, you know, in order to have an even more robust crisis response. And I believe in the case of Mesa PD, they actually have a crisis person, certain hours in the police station that is dedicated solely to responding to, along with law enforcement. And so that aspect, I believe, is funded by, by Mesa, the City of Mesa. But the overall sort of crisis response is still also funded by the state.
Okay, thank you, Brian, very much. I appreciate that information.
Counsel, is there anything else? Okay, thank you very much, Brian.
All right, thank you.
Chief, do you have any closing remarks?
Yes, Mayor, Counsel, just briefly. So your police department has made significant progressive changes over the last few years to try and build a safer, more just, more transparent community. And these include our body camera program, our early warning intervention for officers, getting a legal advisor assigned to the police department, contracting with the Lexipol Company for policy administration. Company for policy administration, updates, and daily training bulletins, using transparency.com to share critical incidences, providing training on procedural justice, implicit bias, and de-escalation, and creating and utilizing the citizens liaison committee. So in closing, I just, the peace, the police in this town are your friends and neighbors. We live here, we raise families here as well. Many of our staff members serve or volunteer on many commissions and nonprofit boards, seeking additional resources and working towards better solutions for our most vulnerable populations. And these include the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, United Way, Flagstaff Shelter Services, Victim Witness Services for Coconino County, the Domestic Bonds Fatality Review Board, Salvation Army, Stronger as One, Northland Family Help Center, and more. So just rest assured, the overwhelming majority of the men and women in police work are here to do good, protect our communities, and serve our citizens, and we thank you for having the conversation with us this evening.
Thank you very much, Chief, and the rest of your staff for leading us through that. Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank the rest of the city council for taking my future agenda item request and moving it to the front of the line so that we could have this discussion tonight instead of six months from now. And even more importantly, I want to thank Chief Musselman and his whole crew, the ones that were here tonight, and also the whole department. I believe that I heard answers to most of the questions I had. I didn't ask, make too many comments along the way, but I think that's because the presentation was excellent and because other council members brought up things that I might have brought up if they hadn't. So, Mr. Musselman, I just want to thank you from my heart, and I really do appreciate the presentation. I look forward to the presentation that we will have in coming months, two more meetings. So in closing, thank you.
Counsel? Mr., I see, I'm going to the Vice Mayor, then Mr. Clifton.
Thank you, Mayor. And Chief, I also wanted to thank you for the presentation tonight and to your, your team and your staff. And I, I thought it was a very good presentation and a good discussion, and I think it's, it's very good that both the council and the public hear about all the things you shared. I just wanted to say, you know, I, I think we have a real opportunity right now for some, some real big shifts and changes in the way we do things. And I, I know that that can be scary at times, and, and, you know, a discussion of which we might not want to have, given, you know, our comforts with the way we do things. But I just really want to, you know, end on a positive, a hope, a, a note of positivity and say, you know, I, I really am grateful for all of you in our community, and, and I'm excited about the discussions ahead. I'm really excited about the opportunity that we have, and I just want to empower you and, and your, your colleagues and, and team to really think outside the box moving forward and, and know that you have my support in, in reshaping the way we best protect and serve our public. And I really look forward to our future discussions, but, but thank you for a really quality discussion tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. I'll be brief. It's been a very good discussion and a very well-informed and well-prepared discussion. I also want to echo many of the comments here that have been directed toward the ongoing support for our law enforcement. The, the policies and the discussion, where the policies and procedures that have been laid out in front of you this evening were not reactive to anything. They've, they've been the product of ongoing evolution and a desire to improve over the years, and they were in place when things were quite heightened in June, and they remain in place. And it's not to suggest they can't be perfected any further. I think if there's anything we heard from the presenters tonight is that the, the department is striving to always advance itself and apply the best policies and the best techniques. So I just wanted to point that out, that our police department has prepared for this presentation and will be prepared for the, the following, too. All, all, of course, coming from a fair item that originated back in, in June, and I, I think frankly, I don't want to speak for the police, but I think there's a desire for them to share their policies and, and share their perspectives and tell their story to the community, because they have not had a, a great opportunity to do that. But this, this is dialogue is, I think, a very good opportunity. I take note that since we had all the public input and, and a very heightened elevated discussion last June on this, you know, that all of the police reports that I have seen, that the things that have come across my desk have involved life-saving measures, and I can count at least two of those in the last two months, responses to unfortunate tragedies, drug overdoses, shootings, homicides, and suicides. And I don't mean to paint a, a very bleak picture here, but it just needs to be noted that work continues, and it continues without question, and it continues in the most professional way. And those are the things that, in my opinion, you know, we, we don't always hear enough of. So I just want to pass on my gratitude. I do look forward to the discussions yet to occur, and I, I want to be, express my thanks to the presenters and to the council for a very thoughtful discussion this evening. Thank you.
I'm just going to make sure that Counsel verbalizes some of the stuff they put in the chats, and I'm going to Mr. Odegaard, and then to Ms. Whelan.
I, I just wanted to say, good job to our police, and thank you. Hopefully, it was very informing for the general public that happened to be listening this evening. So thank you, and a really fine job, so thank you.
I wanted to express my gratitude, Chief, and your law enforcement team, and city leadership and staff. Well done tonight, and, and thank you for the conversation.
Thank you. So if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and move down to item number eleven. This would be public participation for items that are not currently on our agenda. Is there anything for public participation, city clerk? Not seeing any, we'll go ahead and we'll move to item number twelve. This is informational items to and from the mayor, council, and the city manager. We will go ahead and start today with, let's start with Mr., Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I have anything tonight.
Mr. Odegaard?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Ms. Salas?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Whelan? Ms. Whelan? Okay, I'm going to take that as a no. Vice Mayor?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I just wanted to announce one thing, that the NACOG Economic Recovery is having a summit coming up on September twenty-ninth, and it'll be from nine AM to noon, and hopefully you'll put that in your datebooks and be present for a good conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aslan, you didn't have anything? Mr. Aslan?
I do not, ma'am.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have much to add other than just that last week there was an Arizona League of Cities conference over a few days that I attended. It was very informative, covered a bunch of different topics, from ballot initiatives to, to things happening at the local level, and just wanted to express gratitude to the league for putting that on for all of us during these virtual times, and, and gratitude to all of you and members of the city and city staff for the long meeting and all the work that everyone's doing. Stay, stay positive and, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. I have nothing additional. Thank you for a very thoughtful discussion this evening.
The only thing I wanted to add was, the Vice Mayor mentioned the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Conference that was held virtually last week. I wanted to say thank you to Jack and Sarah. I had the opportunity to present on the matricular card and the importance of that being accepted as an ID with regards to banking needs. And after a robust conversation, I'm happy to let Counsel know that that particular item did pass, and so that will be one of the priorities that the league has this year, is working with our state representatives, because that would have to be done at the state level. So with that, not seeing anything else, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.